Okay, I'm going to call the meeting to order. Bloomfield Hills Board of Education Meeting, March 25th, 2021, 6 o'clock. John, take attendance.
All board members are present.
Okay, can we say, stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, public comment? Dave? Morgan Goodman? Are you on? You will have three minutes, Morgan.
Okay, I'm on. Good evening, my name is Morgan Goodman and I speak on behalf of Alice Avenue's concerned parents. There's a bus, a new bus stop on Woodward Avenue that has raised concerns for us. We are requesting for the bus to pick up our children on Alice Avenue for their safety. The rebuttal from the transportation to our request is that the road is too thin. We understand that this may be a concern, however, I've had several special needs foster adults who take the bus. Their buses have been able to see, drive seamlessly up and down the street. There's a turnaround area at the end of the road that allows for more room for the buses to turn around. The narrowness of the road has never posed an issue for any of the buses on our street before, so we aren't sure why it's a present concern. We believe the new bus stop on Woodward is too dangerous for our children. They should not have to wait on Woodward Road to get on the bus. We want to know that our children are safe getting up to the bus stop. There's already a lot of anxiety when sending our children anywhere that we cannot immediately see. Um, sorry, there are known sex offenders in the area in addition to being one of the busiest streets of car traffic. We believe it's a reasonable request and it's in our but, children's best interest to move the bus stop. It, it would bring us great relief to know that they do not have to stand on Woodward where lingering folks are up and down the sidewalk of Woodward where the children are waiting for the bus. Thank you for advance, for hearing our quest, and we look forward to speaking with you further in regards to this issue.
Thank you, Morgan. Dave, Cory, any more public comment? No more public comment? We will close, we will go to Superintendent Watson for COVID data update.
Thank you, President Cohen. Cory, can you pull up the slide, please? So, good evening, everyone. Quite a bit going on with COVID as we all know. First, starting with a little bit of good news is that close to 500,000 doses of the vaccine, whether it's the Johnson &amp; Johnson, Moderna, or Pfizer have been administered. Also, the scalability has gone really well, not just in Oakland County, but the state of Michigan. And so, more and more access is being granted as far as those that would like to be vaccinated. Next slide, please. This is the most recent report with the COVID-19 update. As you can see in the bottom right, we've seen a tremendous increase in cases since our last meeting. In total, this is an increase of over 2,000 cases since the last time. Currently, the seven-day median average is about 372 per day, which is a huge increase. The percentage of cases requiring hospitalization in Oakland County in the past 14 days has actually dropped just a little bit. The percent positive in Oakland County, Oakland County for the last seven days is 9.6%. Kind of like I said before, the increase is across the age group, but really looking at that 14 to 29 age group, and then the 50, sorry, and then the 40 to 59 age group, we're seeing huge jumps. This kind of leads us to where we're at currently. You know, many times we've talked about, in order for schools to be open, we really need help from the community. And I don't know how else to try to, you know, beg or grovel for help. But if we have, if your child is sick, we absolutely need them to stay home. If you're not sure if it's COVID or not, please take them to get tested. And if you do take a child to get tested, all the family members, including siblings, should stay home. Right? So, if you, your child has, you know, you know, some of the different symptoms of COVID and you take them for a test, they should not return to school until that test result has come in, including any siblings. I know that's a huge inconvenience for all of our parents. I also know that if we continue to see the cases rise in Oakland County, it's going to be extremely difficult to keep our schools open for in-person learning and not have to return to virtual learning. Next slide, please. So, like I said, you can see the case numbers have gone up. Yesterday's case numbers in Michigan were the highest of this year. That was until today. Today's case count that came out, the latest update I checked, was at 4:00 PM, and they're actually higher today than they were yesterday, and I believe the highest since December 14th of 2020. Again, if we're going to be able to keep our schools open, we're all going to have to do our part to make sure, whether it's getting tested, or if you're not sure because your son or daughter doesn't feel, again, please keep them home, get them tested, so that we can keep the schools open. Next slide, please. So, this is looking at state hospitalization trends, again, throughout the state of Michigan. For the month of March, we've seen an increase in the hospitalizations in Michigan, and that is going to be the green that you see. Also, we've seen a slight increase in patients on ventilators and critical patients. So, the yellow shows the patients that are on ventilators currently throughout the state of Michigan, and the red shows patients that are in critical care at the moment. Next slide, please. We've also seen, over the past three weeks, an increase in our new cases per 100,000 in our percent positive. This kind of corresponds to the other slides as well. Next slide, please. Currently, in the United States, we're averaging right about 63,000 new cases, so a little bit lower than 250,000, but the numbers are all relative, right? 63,000 cases is a lot of cases in the United States at this time. Next slide, please. Uh, thank you, President Cohen.
Thank you. I don't see any question marks in the chat. Let's see if anyone, Lisa?
Thank you. So, Pat, Superintendent Watson, I heard you say that if a student is testing and waiting for test results, siblings should stay home. I've had a couple parents ask me what, where they're supposed to report seeing siblings of quarantined people at home. I understand we don't all have the facts of someone else's situation, et cetera, but if they suspect that there's somebody that shouldn't be in school that is, is there sort of like a hotline or an anonymous place to make a complaint?
They should call the building administrator so that we can investigate, right? Because each case is different in the situation that goes along with it. And we're looking at, you know, the most updated information, which says, if you're waiting for the test results, all members should stay home, right? But then, at the same time, the Oakland County Health Department shows that siblings and students in quarantine don't need to quarantine unless the student develops symptoms as pending test results and/or test positive. So, each case is so individualized, it's better if they let the building principal know, then the building principal will follow up with us, will work with Leonard and the Oakland County Health Department to see exactly what is going on with that case. And if it's an unreported case, then we'll call the family and follow them directly as well. Again, if we're going to have any chance to keep our schools open, we all have to do our part. And we've said this over and over, right? There's no surprise, but the, how quickly the numbers are going up is alarming, right? So, we're seeing continued spread within the community. The only way to stop that is to follow the mitigation, right? You know, we know in school, our students are wearing a mask, we know we're asking them to wash hands, we know that we're six feet at lunch, we know that we're three feet in the classroom, we know that we're requiring a mask on the playground. What we don't know is what's going on outside. So, wild transmission obviously can take place in schools, we know that the majority of transmission is taking place outside of schools, and it's so important, I mean, we just got back in, like literally just got back in. And so, we all need to do our part.
Okay, so, uh, I don't want to go ahead of someone else if they have questions, but what about the recent influx of articles that we're reading about Michigan being the number one or number two state for school spread? Is there any truth to any of those articles? Or, I know there's some truth, but there are other extenuating circumstances, but we have seen a lot of districts around us with building closures, or, you know, going back to all virtual. Is that, is that a concern for us?
COVID is 100% a concern for every single school district in the world. We're no different. I've only been able to follow up on a couple cases to find out exactly the background. For example, if students are in quarantine, it doesn't mean they're COVID positive, it just means they're close contact. So, if you hear, "School District B is closed because they have 30 positive cases," so they've closed, not a school district, 30 positive cases in a building, that building's gone remote, so education still takes place. What we need to know is whether or not the transmission took place in the school. And when it takes place in a school, it gets reported to Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, and shows up on their website. Um, you know, and one of the reasons you're seeing districts close, or the buildings go to virtual, is because of quarantining, based on how many they might have, or how many teachers still might be in quarantine. We know if you've reached full efficacy as a teacher, you don't have to quarantine, but we also don't know everyone's situation as far as what they can provide to their students. For example, you know, update to the board today, we have about 43% attendance at the high school. So, the high school basically is almost like currently in a hybrid mode right now, because even though everyone can come, you don't have everyone. We also have concurrent teaching, so we know that, oh wow, we have to quarantine 70% of a class, 90% of the class, but we still can keep our same model, right? That model doesn't have to shift compared to the majority of high schools where if you have X amount that are going to be quarantined, you might be better off, whether the spread was in school or not, just shutting down your whole building and going virtual, because that way you can make sure everyone's being educated. There's just so many different nuances for everything that's going on with every case in every school. Again, being quarantined doesn't mean you have COVID, it just means you were within six feet for 15 minutes or more.
Right, so you answered my next question, which was, what happens to individual students that are quarantined, or a couple, when the class is still being taught? They're all asynchronous at that point, even if they're perfectly healthy, because what else can we do, right?
Well, if they've, they've been in close contact, they will be home for 10 days, provided no symptoms occur during those 10 days, then they can return, which is different than if they were actually identified as having COVID. For our high school students, we know they have the opportunity to be in the concurrent model, right? For our other students, K through 8, we still have opportunities for them to have some direct live teaching during the day as well, and then supplemented with whatever additional items they may need. So, you won't have, for example, a third grader that's quarantined for 10 days, that will be asynchronous 100% of the time. We hired some additional teachers to assist with that, and we're looking to bring a couple others on board, because, I mean, it, it's obvious that because we're back full-time and because we're within three feet, we know that makes people a close contact. So, for the longest time, we didn't have that many people in quarantine compared to the school districts that had been in since August. So, whether that's looking a little northwest of us, or talking to Williamson County in Tennessee and seeing what they're doing, we're going to have more students in quarantine. That is going to happen, we need to be prepared for that. There's no ands, ifs, or buts, and it's already happened, right? We know that. And so, we've been preparing for that as well. Also, in K through 5, our interventionists will be able to assist as well and provide some of that live instruction.
Okay, I'm, I'm assuming it's coming, excuse me, I'm assuming it's coming in the continuation of learning plan update, Superintendent Watson, but I do have some questions about the non-asynchronous learning during quarantine for follow-up. Is that going to be provided to us later in the, in the presentation?
No, it would be, it would be the same thing that we've been doing all year long, but there's additional information, we can get to the full board, and of course, that won't be a problem whatsoever, but we've kind of had this, because we've had students that have been quarantined already this year, just, we haven't had a large amount, so we've been providing that all along. So, if there's a specific question, like, especially if it's from a parent, you know, the best thing to do, if you're a parent, you're like, okay, my child's in second grade, I got quarantined today, or I'm worried my child's going to get quarantined, what does that mean for my child? I would have them call the building administrator and say, hey, I just want to know what will it look like for my child in quarantine, if it does happen, just so I can mentally prepare, I can prepare my child, my child gets anxious, he or she always likes to know ahead of time what's going on. And this is another reason that we're hiring additional teachers, because we need to increase our capacity, because we know we're going to have people that are in quarantine at a higher number than we did before.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any other questions on this? Okay, Superintendent Watson, want to go to the next part of the update?
Cory, can you bring up the next slide, please? So, part two, the extended continuity of learning plan. So, on March 16th, the Board of Education approved an in-person schedule change that increased the amount of time students are in person. The schedule was implemented beginning March 22nd, and the ECOL has been updated to reflect this adjustment. Next slide. Approval of the ECOL will reconfirm the schedule will remain unchanged from the beginning of April, so we finish this week, next week is spring break, and then we are scheduled for a full return on April 5th. Next slide, please. President Cohen?
Any questions? I don't see anything in the chat. Jennifer?
So, this has to do with the testing week, which is, I believe, the second week after we return. The, obviously, the high school students have become accustomed to going into school a bit later, but I believe that the testing days are still scheduled for 7:25, and I was wondering, is that some kind of state requirement, or, or is it possible that we have the flexibility to start those testing days the same as other days?
So, correct, testing is scheduled for the second week after. As far as the answer to your question, I'm not sure. I can definitely get back to you regarding why it was set up at that time, how many hours need to be in, how flexible we are with the number of students that can be in the building based on social distancing requirements for the tests. I don't know if the, right now, but I can find out.
Yeah, I would just hate to see our students, like, do worse, right, than they normally would, simply because their, their bodies and brains are jarred, you know, two hours after living on a different schedule for so long.
And I apologize, I don't know the answer to that, but I definitely guess the answer.
That's fine, I'm just curious if we have that flexibility.
Anything else, Jennifer? Any other questions? Lisa?
Okay, um, thanks. My question is regarding when we are, how we're testing, rapid testing athletes, and what part of the ECOL is going to, after spring break, allow us to do some rapid testing of students in general?
I know we're set up to test the students that are involved in athletics. At this time, we don't have anything scheduled, set up, to test our students that are not in athletics. It is mandated by the state for that, if you want to participate in athletics, you have to do this, so it's a state mandate. As a public school, and if you look at some of the independent schools, they can do that. They can say, you can't return to school until you take a test. As a public school, we can't do that. You know, students have to have a free and appropriate public education. If the state of Michigan mandates that you have to test every student, that will give us the ability to do that, but we don't have that ability right now. There's talk of some counties, including Oakland County, potentially opening up a testing site after spring break, at the end of spring break, for students to go in and get tested. Regardless of whether, whether or not that happens, there are free testing available throughout Oakland County. And so, we sent another letter out to the community today saying, hey, if you're traveling, if you're going international, we need you to quarantine for seven days. Also, it's great if people that are coming back, if they're traveling, to get a test, but we can't mandate it. With the athletes, they'll be testing three days a week. Also, the latest information from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services that came out at 4:00 today, said that high school athletics are on the borderline of, or the tipping point to not being able to function, and that's something we could see a change in very soon if the cases continue to increase.
Uh, okay, and the only other question I have is regarding the ECOL that we have posted online. I went through it, and it doesn't seem to have been updated to, you know, include the fact that we're not using any of our metrics to close buildings. Where do I find that?
So, I'll take a look at that, I don't have it on me, haven't looked at it today, and get you the most updated version, and then get that to you and the full board.
Okay, and in general, I think that our dashboard, it is still a bit misleading, because it looks like those same metrics we've used, you know, from months ago are still in use for closing buildings, but we don't use those anymore.
Right, there's no on and off switch for closing buildings. If it would please the board, we can have something on there that says, for, you know, for informational purposes. I know from a lot of community members, when we made the transition from a way the, you know, if we're red, we simply close, requests came in from, I would say, well over 100 community members that said, okay, it is what it is, but I like being able to go to the dashboard and just get an update. I don't want to look, I don't want to bookmark anything, I just want to go there. So, we can add something that says, for your information.
I, I agree that it's useful information, and I, you know, to the extent that our community finds it useful, absolutely, I think we should continue to provide it, but with a disclaimer that this is not, these aren't the metrics or thresholds we're currently using to close or temporarily suspend in-person learning.
We can add that, thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Pat, want to go to the next part?
Thank you, President Cohen. Part three, staffing update. So, currently, we have 248 recovered or returned, we have 30 staff members that are currently quarantined, 23 that are active on FMLA, and two workers comp disability. Overall, pairs were down six, for preschool and Lashkey, we're down 31, and for drivers, we're down seven. Next slide, please. So, we are making progress, if you notice the, in hiring, if you notice, the open positions are shrinking, but we still need three Lashkey or Kid's Own teachers, one supervisor, we need 10 par educators district-wide, we need 10 bus drivers. If you're watching and you're interested and you'd like to get your CDL license, we definitely, definitely need more drivers. We need two instructional assistants at Wing Lake, and four part-time food service positions. Next slide, please. President Cohen?
Any questions? Okay, with that, we will go next, which is just my quick president's report. So, as many of you know, this has been a big week for many of our students and family, as after a year, we finally had full days for all of our in-person students. I know most schools had celebrations on Monday prior to students being dropped off. On behalf of my board colleagues, I want to thank everyone involved in making this happen for all of our students, as I know, we all know there was a lot of work involved, a significant, a lot of work. During tonight's meeting, we hopefully will be passing our core values and working on our district's mission and vision statements, helping set our vision for years to come in our district. I also want to give a shout-out to some of our student organizations that continue to give back to our community. For example, Kids Read to Kids is an organization where high school students read to younger students in our community and help build their passion to read. Helping Hands continues to tutor students throughout our community. Our National Honor Society students have put in together care packages for students in need, and our Bloomfield Hills High School Community Club, in collaboration with Student Leadership, has put together a program for families throughout the district called Egg My Yard, which is not just to put smiles on many of our younger families in our community, but this is a fundraiser for the Care House, which is an organization that helps victims of child abuse and neglect, where they have raised thousands of dollars for that charity. Finally, I want to wish everyone a happy spring break, be as safe as possible, be as safe as possible, as we look forward to seeing you all back on April 5th. With that, I will go to you, Superintendent Watson, for a superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Cohen. March has been an incredibly busy month, preparing for a full return, monitoring the current legislation, shifting plans a couple times, so a special thanks to every single person that made it happen. Our first full week back actually marked our sixth first day of school, so it was great, I had the opportunity to visit every single building in the district, engage with our staff and students, and help the celebrations. With spring break coming up, I wish everyone a safe, restful break. And again, when we come back, not even when we come back, even during break, we need to work together to keep our schools open. If your child is sick, please, 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 keep them home. Take them in for a test. If you're taking your child in for a test, everyone in the household should remain home, including the siblings. And I get as a parent, nobody wants to be that parent, like, oh, it's my child that has the lice, or my child that has crook, or my child that has the flu. But it's important that we all do this if our schools are going to stay open, so we don't have to return to virtual learning. So, please, if you have a concern about COVID and someone not reporting, please let your building administrator know, so that we can follow up and investigate. Thank you, President Cohen.
Thank you, Pat. We will go now to Tina Kostick for an administrative appointment.
So, hang on one second. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce Jake McDermott as the Director of Physical Plant Services. Jake has served the educational community for 11 years, and most recently as an Assistant Director in a neighboring Oakland County district. Born and raised a Michigander, Jake and his family, including three children, enjoy all the seasonal activities that Michigan offers. And Jake is with us here this evening, virtually.
Thank you, Tina. Can I get a motion?
Sure, Paul. I move that Jacob McDermott be appointed Director of Physical Plant Services with an effective date of March 29th, 2021. Second.
Okay, any discretion? No, we'll vote. Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diva?
Yes.
I'm a yes, motion passed with 7-0, congratulations, Jacob. Would you like to say a few words to our community?
Absolutely. I want to say thank you for this amazing opportunity, and I look forward to my new role, serving the Bloomfield Hills Schools community, and I can't wait to hit the ground running and make a difference.
Thanks, Jacob, looking forward to working with you. We know with the bond and everything, there'll be a lot, we'll be corresponding with you. So, good luck and congratulations again. With that, Jonathan, we will go to consent agenda. Thanks, Jacob. Looking forward to working with you. We know with the bond and everything, there'll be a lot uh we'll be corresponding with you. So good luck and congratulations again. With that, uh Jonathan, we will go to consent agenda.
Hey, um, I moved that the Board of Education approved the recommendations detailed in the consent agenda as follows. Uh, request to approve minutes from the regular meeting in February twenty-five, twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one. Request to approve minutes from the special meeting board work session of March second, twenty-twenty-one. Request to approve minutes from the study session of March eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. Request to approve minutes from a special meeting board work session at March sixteen, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, request to approve the monthly financial reports. Moved that the Board of Education approved the financial reports as presented. Moved that the Board of Education approved the disbursement reports as presented. And, um, I moved that the Board of Education award bid number C two one zero four, trial improvements to the building. Uh, includes general trades, Hicks Construction Company, three hundred forty-nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Glass and glazing, Miller's Architectural Glass Incorporated, eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars. Painting, RG Painting LLC, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty dollars. Resilient flooring, Continental Contracting, sixty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. Mechanical, Dickerson Mechanical, one hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. And electrical, Hartwick Electric, twenty-one thousand, nine hundred ninety dollars. Total cost for this bid is seven hundred ten thousand dollars. Seven hundred ten thousand, forty dollars. And C, general conditions, construction management and archi- and architect fees. The total award is eight hundred fifty-nine thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars, forty cents. This project will be funded by the sinking fund. Uh, and lastly, I move the Board of Education approve the personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, John. Any comments, support?
Second.
Uh, yeah, I was going to support, but I also have a question. So if the trial improvements are currently are being funded by the sinking fund, um, do they still, do they preserve the original allocation that they have from the bond as well? Um, for future projects?
I am going to defer to that, uh, to Tina on that, Jennifer.
So there haven't been any, any reduction or any change to the, the bond-related allocation. But, you know, certainly we'll take a review of, we are always looking at what work makes sense to accelerate or not and the timing. Um, but, you know, at this point in time, there hasn't been a change.
Thank you. With that, Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diva?
Yes.
On the yes, consent passes. With that, we will go to general discussion. Report of our Finance Facilities Legal Affairs Commission, FFLA. Diva?
Uh, thank you, Paul. Uh, so I'll give a brief update on the FFLA committee, which is held on March eighteenth. Uh, in attendance were President Cohen, Trustee Behren, uh, Keith McDonald from HR, Superintendent Watson, Dave Shulkin, Tina Kostick and myself. Also in attendance were Karen Hildebrandt uh from Finance, Paul Wills, our owner's rep from Plant and Rand Crusa, Daryl Dombro and Brian Goby from Barton Mallow and uh Paul Corneliusson from JL French. So, um, really we have um three topics I want to touch on today. Uh, first was the bond, then I'll touch on the sinking fund update, including the IA that uh Trustee Mantlow touched on and, and some other minor updates in the IA lease. So first, let's talk about the bond. Uh, there are four projects that we discussed. One was the Loser and Booth asbestos abatement. Uh, the original contract has been completed and an additional abatement will come to the board uh for approval at the April twenty-ninth meeting. Uh, for bid package number one for selective demolition at Loser, the demolition work is ongoing. Um, uh, on the other two projects, which is the package for North Hills Middle School and South Hills Middle School, the design drawing estimates have been completed and, and construction drawings are underway. Um, there's a the, the FFLA committee is continuing to finalize the reporting formats uh from Barton Mallow and, and JL French. And we'll, we hope to consent on that within the next meeting. The committee was pretty much in agreement that we ought to be sharing regular updates on progress related to the bond with the community. So there'll be more information forthcoming on, on how we plan to do that. So that's pretty much all I wanted to touch on, on the bond. Uh, next we'll go to the sinking fund update. Right now, there's about a hundred, one point seven million in projects, of which eight hundred and fifty-nine K just got approved for um, uh, the trial facility. There's about three seventy-five K set aside for emergency unplanned work and roof repairs. And uh, five sixteen uh thousand worth of projects have already been awarded. So that goes up to the one point seven million. Lastly, on other minor updates, um, the administration is working to renew the lease with the IA, which ends on June thirtieth, and, and so that will be addressed uh in the coming weeks. Uh, that's pretty much all I have to share with the board. Uh, Lisa, you had a question?
I do, thank you. So you said that you were working on um completing the reporting formats that Barton Mallow will use. Can you tell me, I, I don't know what that is?
Uh, sure, I, I can just, uh, uh, I guess, Barton Mallow is a standard format where they talk about what the original budget was for each bid, uh, what approved revisions are, what budget transfers are. Um, so essentially, a bunch of, a bunch of details by line item for every single item that they track, which totals up to the entire bid package. So there's going to be, let's say, right now, if I look at my report, there's eight line items for middle school north. There's probably four for middle school south and, and so on. And they've got updates on every one of those that they will be bringing forth to the FFLA committee uh every time we meet. And, and so we are working with them to standardize a reporting format that we can easily see how the team is performing versus the original approved budget uh, which was approved by the board.
All right, so you're taking what their, what is their standard reporting format and you're customizing it according to what you and your committee would like to see for Bloomfield?
Uh, yeah, in addition to their standard a reporting format, which has a lot of detail, we're adding summary formats, which will be easier for us to look at before we dive into the details and which could potentially be shared with the community in a summarized form down the road.
All right, is that the only change from their standard reporting format that you're recommending?
Um, yes. Um, so again, I'd like to emphasize it's an addition to their standard reports.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, we will go to Jennifer for the-
Paul, I just wanted to mention one thing. Um, I believe, yeah, Diva mentioned that there was some um asbestos abatement at Booth. I believe that really goes related to the sinking fund as opposed to the bond. Am I, am I right?
Um, it was included in bond updates. Um, uh, I'm going from the presentation here. Maybe Tina can chime in.
Yeah, Tina, would you know if that, the asbestos costs is coming out of the sinking fund or the bond? I think that's, is that the question, Howard?
Yes.
Anything related to Booth as far as the, the building renovations, which those are just the areas that were left uh to bring up the rest of the building to be the same, like the asbestos, is out of the sinking fund. But any pilot cost, um, where we're actually going to pilot furniture and tech and things like that, that's out of the bond. Did that help?
Um, I'm, I'm looking through my notes, um, Tina, maybe the other way, but, but either way, I, I see one booth project in the sinking fund and I see the booth, uh, another booth project in the bond fund. So there's two of them.
Yeah, so that's splitting up what's related to the bond versus what's related to sinking fund.
Howard, does that answer your question?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, we will go to the Board Instructional Committee update. Jennifer?
Hi, um, so the Board Instructional Committee, we met on March first. Um, and as that was a couple of weeks ago, um, after I'm done talking, I would love to invite Assistant Superintendent Bidlak or anyone from Learning Services to, to add on if there have been further developments. Um, so first we talked about, you know, our, our practical situations regarding COVID. Um, we discussed the fact that although we will have virtual options for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, um, that live streaming is not planned to be continued um at this time for any grade level. Um, we talked about Bloomfield Virtual for K five right now, that we have thirty teachers and six hundred and thirty-three families, although I'm not sure if the balance of that changed. Um, when a school opened full time this, this week. Um, we have Bloomfield Virtual, we talked about how the teachers are employing um, somebody in the home identified as the home coach um, to help the students with teaching the home coach Bloomfield's methods of literacy instructions. Um, so to, to maximize the instructional efficiency. Um, what was very interesting to me is that Bloomfield Virtual has a, a get team, a global education team. They have teacher leaders for each grade level. They have a PTO, they have a yearbook, they have assemblies and they've had three book fairs. So, um, big congratulations to, to Principal Teal and all of her team uh for making Bloomfield Virtual a, a true school. Um, we talked about that Bloomfield Virtual will likely continue um to be an option in the fall for, for K five and something similar, if not the same, probably for six-eight. Um, we talked about the fact that there might be special broadcasting rooms, um, maybe at Booth. So instead of, say, the, the teacher having to, to sit at a desk and do the live streaming um, or in front of a whiteboard, that maybe like there's a, a camera in the middle of the room. Um, and then the teacher could utilize all four walls of the room um for instructional spaces. So kind of just bringing more of the, of the tech piece into it. Um, then we talked about high school where we will likely have the core course offerings in a virtual format, but not the breadth of the high school courses to be offered virtually. Um, if, if students needed to be all virtual, their schedules would probably be a combination of Bloomfield Hills classes and Michigan virtual classes to fill in um any gaps in the, in the course offerings, especially for, you know, more eclectic type electives. Um, students could, may have a blended schedule, so they were just asked um, on their course enrollment forms for next year, whether they're interested in taking um, a hybrid, uh, uh, an online class, so basically having a hybrid format. Um, and so I'm sure that the high school team is, is assimilating that information. Um, we talked very briefly about summer options for credit recovery. Um, edgenuity, I, I, I think is, I'm not quite familiar. I think it's a program we've used in the past for credit recovery. Um, we talked about that maybe we would have the HHS teachers be teaching asynchronously um as well. Um, and then we talked a little bit about virtual tutoring um during Black Hawk Hour. I'm not totally sure whether that's something that's already happening or, or thinking about happening um, at this time. Um, okay, so then we talked about the math equity project, um, which Margaret Schultz um, and, and Pat are, are quarterbacking. And so a lot of research has been done, you know, research in our student body. And so the, these were really the main findings, that our students um should be able to feel safer about making mistakes. Um, so to give space, uh, you know, space for multiple attempts and, and productive struggle with math problems. Um, also their findings indicated a need to feel safer about asking questions and maybe more student-to-student problem-solving conversations. Um, also, they, they uncovered that we need to have a strong relationship with teachers and, and more strength-based feedback um given so that our students uh have a positive math identity. Um, so the, the project is going to be working on new criteria for eighth grade Algebra One placement and also the methods by which these criteria will be communicated um out to the community. Um, next year, starting in the fall, they will be branching out to, to um widen the project to include K five teachers. Okay, and then, um, almost done. So we talked about two more, three, three more things. Um, one is developmental kindergarten, which we plan to offer in the fall, which Bloomfield Hills Schools has never offered. Um, it is a, considered to be a best practice. Um, and what that would essentially mean is that when a child turns five and is eligible for kindergarten, they would have a choice as to whether to enroll in kindergarten or developmental kindergarten, which would then be followed by a year of kindergarten. Um, so we talked about just, you know, which we were just trying to understand, like, you know, how parents might, might make those kinds of decisions. And, and Superintendent Watson brought up the very interesting point that, you know, parents, it's not, it's not just about asking once a, a family, asking themselves, you know, is, is our child ready for kindergarten? It's more about projecting, you know, in, into the future, like transitioning into middle school, transitioning into high school. Um, because once a child is in the higher grades, you know, there's really no opportunity to go back to work on some foundational skills. Whereas, you know, the converse is not true. You can always seek out faster, harder, more accelerated curriculum in, in middle school and high school years if you are ready for it. So, um, that is something that is in the works to be offered in the fall, but it will not be offered as a Bloomfield Virtual class. Um, then, almost lastly, we talked a little bit about MYKIP, uh, Michigan Continuous Improvement Project, um, and how that's going. This is a system, we all know, but for, for the community's sake, this is a new system developed by the state of Michigan to streamline and really um bring together under one umbrella, uh, strategic planning, school improvement plans, district improvement plans. Um, and in the aspiration for continuous quality improvement. Um, so what we talked about a bit was that our, our needs for the MYKIP process are going to be Carrie Cracker, our, you know, former Eastover principal and now our district assessment coordinator and data specialist, and also Susan Golab, who is our administrator for professional development and continuous improvement. Um, so Susan and Carrie are going to be working with different sub-teams um, who are going to be going over um this, the SIPs, the school improvement projects and with, with also different subcommittees, for example, that might deal with the multi-tiered systems of support. Another subcommittee might be dealing with achievement data. Um, it's a six-month process and it is pretty um proscribed and broken down by the state as to what um will be happening month by month. Um, and, and if Carrie or Susan are here at the meeting, um, you're welcome to, to say a couple of words if you like. And then the last thing we, we just talked about is a small committee meeting to, to finish the metrics and targets for strategic plan, uh, goal area one, which is academics and instruction. And that's it. Thank you.
Jennifer, I have a quick question, and I see Howard. Um, we talked about, and maybe you'd covered this and I missed it, summer credit recovery. But what about, I know we talked about this at previous board meetings- But what about, I know we talked about this in previous board meetings. What about sort of the, what we call the, the slide from what happened in the last year? Are we putting together programs for the summer for, you know, whether it's K through five or six through 12, you know, to help those students that have, you know, let's just say lacked, you know, in, in terms of what they needed to get throughout the year because of everything that was going on the last year?
I think so, but I'm going to defer to Superintendent Watson or Assistant Superintendent Bidlak. I, I know that the programs we had last summer, the, the reading and the math, I, I believe those are definitely going to be there for the elementary grades and, and probably more, but I'll, I'll be quiet now.
Good evening, Paul and Jennifer. Can you hear me okay? Okay, great.
We can hear you.
You know, the, the quickest answer is to say absolutely yes. And there's quite a bit being planned out with PA3 that just got passed, the House bill for 48 and 449, which you're familiar with. There was also another provision in there that funneled, that has the potential to funnel more grant money specifically for in-person summer school programming, K8. And so what we've done is we've paused and have regrouped to schedule out and build out those components that fit within those grant dollars. And then for nine, grades nine through 12, there's much more flexibility in the method of instruction. So we've been going through over the last, goodness, I, I think public PA3 has only been out less than two weeks now, or, or I'm not sure if I have that timeframe right. So we've been combing through that and readjusting some of those programming pieces. And we have quite a bit built out right now. Our plan is to have all of that presented at the April 15th Board of Ed meeting, or maybe, maybe it's the 14th. But whatever the date is for our next board meeting, we plan to be presenting those things as well as reviewing them, hopefully at BIC on April 12th. Some of the work that we still have to do is we have to work with HR regarding some of the stipend amounts and job postings, because we had to shift and change some of those things. So we plan to have quite a few offerings. We've expanded our virtual offerings at the middle school level. And we're going to hang on to the structure, the virtual structure that we had at the elementary level. It was very popular. Actually, when, when we put that together, we actually imagined we'd probably have that for the next five, six, 10 years. We didn't imagine after the pandemic that people wouldn't be interested in that. We figured that was probably a lasting program. But we are taking a hard look right now in adding a K, a in-person option as well that may be fundable to a large extent with these grant dollars. So that's going to make that possible. We're also looking at different types of credit recovery and grade improvement opportunities that kids at the high school can have. What we can't offer, we won't be able to duplicate all of our classes, but there's still Michigan Virtual High School. And Jennifer was right. She said, we usually call it E2020. So Ingenuity 2020 is another program that we use if we can't offer it ourselves. Sometimes if it's just a singleton or not enough students, we might utilize that. So we'll be able to present a lot of those components. And what we've mostly been doing is going through with high school, matching that up and making sure that the structure might also fit within PA3 to see if we can offset some of those costs for our students as well. So, so far all of that's looking really promising, but there's quite a bit of work for us to do. Partnering with HR and union leadership, taking a good look at the stipend amounts and kind of going through that. And I believe by April 12th, we'll have great information for BIC and then bring that forward at the April 15th board meeting.
Thanks Todd. Howard, you had a question?
One comment and one question. The comment is I'm really excited what I heard in the BIC report related to goal number one, metrics and targets being developed jointly between LST and the board. That's wonderful. And that would be a wonderful feeder from those goals into the MYKIP process that will be initiated in that Vice President Matlow explained. So that's the comment. That's wonderful that that is moving forward, both of those processes. The question is related to this term that I hadn't heard before, developmental kindergarten. One term that I've heard over the years, not in Bloomfield, but around the country is a term called red shirting. Could someone explain what red shirting is versus developmental kindergarten? Are they the same thing or are they different?
I yield the floor.
Is that for, I guess Todd or Pat? I guess that's a question.
Todd, 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 face just popped up. So Todd gets.
I'll take a, I'll give some commentary towards it. I'm not sure if it'll answer your question completely. Red shirting is not a educational term that we use. That usually refers maybe for a family, almost giving that as a description, similar to like a football team might red shirt a freshman so that they have another year of eligibility. So sometimes community or family members use that term, but it's not an educational term. We think of it more of, of basically that if your child is at kindergarten age, but if the parents believe that what's right for that child is to have two years of kindergarten. And, you know, we, every year we have a portion of families that do that. So technically we do have a developmental program right now, but it's not very conducive because what families are electing to do, that if they want two years of kindergarten, they might do a inner district school of choice and do kindergarten at one elementary building, and then move to their neighborhood elementary building for kindergarten the next year. And what we want to do is we just want to be able to provide a two-year kindergarten experience for those families that feel that that's right based on the development of their individual child. So it's not based on readiness either. So the district will not have like a readiness assessment that you would take and then we would determine where you would go. This is really a parent guided decision. And then some families might consider that red shirting or maybe use that term, but that's not a term that we use.
So let me, as a follow-up, so the, the kindergarten, not the developmental kindergarten, but that, you know, kindergarten which precedes first grade will have a mixture of five-year-olds and six-year-olds in it. So will that therefore carry forward all the way till graduation at high school? So you'll end up with 18-year-olds and potentially 19-year-olds in, in the graduating class.
Trustee Baron, if I can try to answer that, as you know, I have three children. Two of my children, my two youngest participated in the Young Pies program. I had to make the decision in conjunction with my wife and decide whether or not we wanted our daughters as seniors to be 16 at the beginning of the year and turning 17, or if we wanted them to be 17 at the beginning of the year and turning 18. Although by kindergarten standards, you know, can they sit, pay attention, follow directions? Maybe read a couple of sight words, maybe even read, know the alphabet, count to 100, sure, all those things. But that also depends on how often parents are working with their children. And so their senior year, trustee Baron, they'll either be 17 or 18, depending whether they're in pre-kindergarten or they do kindergarten right away. So traditionally it wouldn't be students that would turn 19 their senior year.
So it's, it's 17 or 18, not 18 or 19. I was off by one year. But you will have a mixture of, of ages all the way through their matriculation.
Correct. And we do now, right? So senior year, you have those that are 17 or 18, that turn 17 or 18 when they graduate. No different. You always have a couple that might turn 19, depending on circumstances. But it's nothing new. And part of the conversation, again, this is a parent decision, but part of the conversation is you really start to see where your students are in third grade. And if you decide, because they started early, that maybe they're a little behind at that point, it's kind of difficult to repeat at that point, not impossible compared to if you wait a little bit by having that additional foundation, then as they move forward, if school becomes easy, there's always additional things they can do to kind of move them forward that are a little easily, easier structured.
So on a dollars and cents standpoint, we get foundation dollars for developmental kindergarten and regular kindergarten. So we would get two years of foundation allowance for that student for kindergarten?
I believe that's correct. Todd, correct me if I'm wrong.
Correct. The age of the child would still have to match the same age requirements for kindergarten. Once you match that age, then they're eligible for full foundation allowance. And the, the two years, they're, they're just, that first year that they're coming in, we would receive funding for that child and receive funding for all of our students all the way through 12th grade.
So that we get, so a student, we're getting foundation allowance, assuming that student, you know, goes all the way through beginning to end, we will get 14 years of foundation allowance, not just 13 years for that student. Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Howard. Jonathan?
This is just for anyone that happens to be getting their information from this meeting. Can you go over the age of the children? Like, I remember hearing something about that birthday to being between certain months, that type of thing for the developmental kindergarten. Can someone go over that, just in case anyone happens to get all of their information from a board meeting?
Yeah, either for anybody enrolling into our next school year, for kindergarten or developmental kindergarten will need to be five by September 1st. And, and that's usually where developmental kindergarten plays a nice role because depending on where your age is or birthday is, you're either going to be a very young, you have the potential to be a very young kindergarten student. And a lot of families, when they're sort of in that gray area, choose to wait another year or it becomes appealing to do that two years of kindergarten where that developmental kindergarten is really going to be geared specifically towards preparing students, not only for first grade, but also making sure that we're giving the time to bring that student into the skill sets that we're looking for. And it's a, will be a really nice opportunity to be able to have a class specifically geared and focused just on that developmental kindergarten philosophy. But the age requirements are, are the same, John. So it isn't a different age requirement. It's simply if you're eligible for kindergarten, we'll be able to have that option for you. We usually don't get large numbers in that. So my guess would be we'll probably run one section of that. But if there is a little bit more of an interest in that, then we'll look at adding another section. But it's usually not very large numbers. Typically based on our percentages, I would expect maybe we'll have interest in the range of anywhere from 10 to 20 families that, that that might be appealing to.
That answer your question, John?
Sure. Thanks.
Jennifer, did you have a question or?
I just wanted to correct myself because I conveyed a little misinformation inadvertently before. Actually, our district did once have a developmental kindergarten program. And it was discontinued some years ago for reasons that I'm not sure why. But, so we're happy to, to bring it back up again.
Thank you. With that, thanks Jennifer. We will go to Heather Chen and Adriana Kalabat for the students.
Sorry, Michelle's hand is up.
It's okay. I know you were getting ready to say, I just wanted to, Tad alluded to there being one section. Just wanted to make sure we are aware that this is not something that will be offered at every elementary school location, correct Todd? And so we want to keep that in mind also.
Yes, that's right. We don't believe we would have the numbers to sustain a developmental kindergarten at each one of the elementaries. And I apologize, a section, we often refer to it as a section, which, which parents would call that a classroom. So we'll have one developmental kindergarten classroom, we're certain about that. And then if we have more numbers where that is a greater interest than what we're predicting, we'll take a look at adding a second classroom in the district. And more than likely, we are targeting Eastover for the location of the first classroom. And then from there, depending on where that interest lies, we would take a look to see if we can't centralize where the second classroom might be offered for developmental kindergarten. And so it gets a little bit more flexibility. And then as well as if that particular building has an extra classroom that we'd be able to utilize. But we all have a ways to go before we plan that out and identify those locations.
I guess we have Jonathan and Howard had some questions, follow up to this.
Yeah, one more quick question. What was, or do you know what the situation is for busing for the developmental kindergarten?
I do not know that yet. We would have to work with Jake, who's only been hired for, I think now for 15 minutes. And so we're going to let him get started and then we'll take a look at the capacity for transportation to be able to offer something like that. But for learning services, we wouldn't necessarily be able to answer that, but we will, but when we get ready and before we enroll people into that, we'll have an answer for transportation, but we'll have to have our transportation department help with that as well as get past input as well.
Okay. Howard, did you have a clarifying question?
My, my question was related to bussing.
Okay, good. All right. With that, Heather, Adriana, take it away.
Sounds good. Am I able to share my screen?
Yes, you can.
Thank you. Here we go.
Yep.
So first of all, thank you for having us tonight. We're going to get started. We're just representing the Student Board Advisory Council tonight to provide a small update on what we've seen from the student perspective. Just a general overview of what we've seen from in-person learning. Since cohorts have combined, a lot of students have expressed very positive feedback on having the social interaction of normal school, as we would call it. They've been expressing positivity and mental health and being able to better engage within the classroom by talking to new, talking to different students, talking to their teachers and just having that feeling of normalcy.
On the other hand, there are some concerns about how crowded the school can be at certain times. I know that I had some classes where we only had maybe eight or so people and each person got like a big desk. But there's other classrooms where it doesn't even feel like the three feet of distancing is being maintained. Sometimes when like students end up having to share desks, it's like there's not any distancing at all. It's like half a foot. So some students are concerned about that. And also during dismissal times, I know at the high school especially, the hallways get super, super crowded. So if there could be like staggered dismissal, I think that would be very helpful. Yeah. Additionally, some of the people that are in person are, are really worried about like a COVID outbreak post-spring break because a lot of people are still going on trips. So, so some students, you know, their, their parents require them to, to go to school every day because they don't want them to stay at home or do virtual. So they're really worried about going in person and getting COVID from students that, that are coming in from, from other states. And additionally, I know that asynchronous Wednesdays weren't supposed to be like a permanent fixture, but that has been the biggest request that I've been hearing from students. It was kind of a rapid transition from, you know, having those asynchronous Wednesdays, which were really helpful to catch up on work, especially because school's a lot more difficult in a virtual setting. And now that it's gone, it's, it was kind of an abrupt transition. So we were looking to maybe have some sort of compromise to make it easier to deal with that.
And then the last thing we wanted to touch on was on the continued discussion of like cheating within the classroom. We've heard from a lot of teachers that the concern of having an equitable learning situation with some students at home having access to notes and resources while taking tests compared to students in the classroom who would not have access to resources like a normal school year, like how a test normally is taken. When we were brainstorming solutions as a team, we talked about, there's some students at International Academy who are planning to hold a seminar on the disadvantages of cheating. And that's going to be happening as a school-wide effort to talk to students about why cheating is not helpful towards their learning in the long run and how learning is more than just grades, it's more of a long-term journey that requires commitment and cheating helps in the short run, but does not benefit in that long-term goal. We also talked about for more of a standard to kind of prevent cheating at its root, to encourage different testing methods. We were brainstorming, maybe having some group discussions that were graded by a teacher to see contributions. to see contributions by students, essays, projects, overall, just things that cheating can't really impact, and that students more so demonstrate their knowledge through an applicable testing method. But those were just some ideas we came up with, and we thought they might help. So I think that's the end of our presentation, but we really appreciate the time taken to listen to us, and yeah.
Oh, thank you, thank you very much, Heather, Adriana. Thanks, thanks very much for putting this together. This was helpful. I know Howard and Lisa, you know, again, so I could see everyone, so just raise your hand. Howard, you had a question, and Lisa?
Yes, thank you very much. Good, good information. Was wondering whether your points that you brought up to us have been shared with Mr. Hollerith and Ms. Gibson?
So for Ms. Gibson, our points have been shared from the International Academy side with Ms. Gibson for the cheating part, about coming up with ways to do that. For Mr. Hollerith, I'm not sure if they've been shared with him, but if not, then we can definitely move forward with that if there is interest, and then schedule a meeting to go through with that. I think that's a great idea.
Thank you.
Lisa? All right, Heather, did you want to comment?
No, I didn't have anything to add.
Lisa?
Thank you, ladies, that was wonderful, great information and great presentation. My question is, just out of curiosity, when you were talking about getting feedback from students about liking or having concerns, how do you go about soliciting feedback? And what students, is this really just high school students, or are you talking to middle and elementary students as well? And how are you getting the feedback?
Right now, a lot of it is focused from high schoolers. I know that for this meeting, I send out messages to multiple group chats from people in sports, people that are in different various groups, like student leadership, or like a political awareness club. I think we've been trying to expand to middle school, maybe having some sort of focus group with middle schoolers that, that meet with the Student Board Advisory Council, so we can get their perspectives as well.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle?
Thank you, that was one of the things I was going to ask Lisa, so thank you for covering that. Thank you, ladies, for an amazing job presenting today. I'm definitely looking forward to working with you all. I just wanted to echo in the sentiments that was made earlier about the conversation possibly with, maybe the super, and as well as the principals at the buildings, just so they're a little aware of like what some concerns will be for the students, because it'll be easier for, you know, them to maybe even address them quicker, or give you some great feedback, because you've got some really amazing points. And we want to make sure, you know, that they're able to hear them, so they can be addressed as fast as possible, right? So thank you, especially with the distancing. And I really think that is an amazing suggestion about the crowding, leaving the building, and having possibly a staggered dismissal. So there's some really great suggestions in there that would definitely benefit the principals from hearing from you all. So amazing job, and thank you today.
Yes, any, any other questions? Great, thank you very much, Heather, Adriana. Thanks, thank you very much for taking the time, appreciate it, great presentation.
Thank you.
With that, we will go to the Oakland County School Board Association update. Lisa?
Okay, thank you. I don't have a very long report. We met last night, and the Oakland County School Board Association is again, as a reminder, open to representatives of all 28-plus RISD, so 29 districts in Oakland County. Some of the topics that we talked about were returning to in-person meetings. Everybody knows that March 31st is the last date for virtual meetings, unless there's a change from, from our governor. But right now, that's the last date. So we are also bound by the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services restriction of 25 people in one space. So what we're planning to do in Bloomfield seems like the only solution right now, which is to have a meeting in person of board members and livestream the public in for public comment and attendance, public attendance at the meeting. We discussed what other districts are doing regarding mandatory closures by Oakland County Health Department because of the number of COVID cases that are spreading among 10- to 19-year-olds, and how different districts are handling it, what they're doing, how they're supplementing, and picking up, shifting from virtual to in-person to virtual to in-person, as the case may be. So this was mainly an information sharing opportunity for, for members to get ideas about how other boards are dealing with situations similar to the ones that we are. We didn't have a speaker or a topic per se, more of a check-in. That's about it. Jennifer and Howard were also in the meeting with me. If I'm forgetting something, please feel free, oh, Paul, maybe you were too for part of it, or all of it, I don't remember. But anyway, anyone who has something to add, if I forgot, or any questions, welcome. Nothing? Okay.
I think, all good. With that, Jennifer, Oakland County Health Division.
Howard, Howard has something to say.
Yeah, Paul and Lisa. So Lisa summarized it pretty nicely. The, the Open Meetings Act rules right now, and the inter, and the interrelationship with MDE HHS is very complicated. The lawyer at MASP, Brad Benasik, wrote a two-page memo with a Q and A, and there's a good amount of ambiguity in, in there, coming out of Lansing on this. So we have a few weeks to sort all this out, because I think our next board meeting is on the April 14th. But I will definitely defer to the president, the superintendent, Rebecca, and the tech people to figure out what we need to do. It's possible we could, you know, have that limit of 25. There's also a possibility that we could be holding it in an auditorium, but that's not exactly clear coming out of, out of Lansing. So I, I think that it does deserve some analysis, possibly with our lawyer, to make sure that we are following the, the rules specifically. And also, we're not exactly sure what will happen between now and then related to the law and the interpretation. So everything is pretty clear as mud right now, and we will have to see over the next few weeks how it all sorts out.
Thanks, Howard. With that, Jennifer, Oakland County Health update?
Yeah, hi. So as you guys know, the Oakland County Health Division has been very nicely meeting with school board members every other Wednesday, and giving us updates that, and any ask, answer, any questions we may have. Going off of the original COVID data that we talked about in the beginning of the meeting, cases are skyrocketing. This is where I get to make my personal plea to the entire community, please do not have parties or go to parties. This is a total bummer, we're a year in, we're exhausted, but this is no time to have finish line syndrome. The state of whether we can have schools open or not depends on everybody's cooperation, as Superintendent Watson previously stated. So the good news is that even with the rise in cases, the infrastructure in the county for healthcare remains very strong, hospital capacity is strong. They have, they are able to keep up with the contact tracing. Through the Oakland County School Board Association, that at least for whom Lisa's our representative, the board was able to, their board was able to arrange with, through Oakland Schools, our intermediate school district, to have four vaccine clinics specifically for school personnel. These will be in four consecutive Saturdays, starting on April 10th, and going through May the 1st. So if there are any school personnel, anyone employed by the district who has not yet been able to get a vaccination appointment, who wants one, please reach out to, it's, it's basically our designated district representative, which I believe would be Leonard, and, and to see if you can secure a spot on one of those four Saturdays. Or you can feel free to reach out to me, because I can get you in touch with, with the people at Oakland Schools. You can, if, if school personnel would like to, they can still use the Save My Spot appointment roster that is through the county health division. They have actually executed, you know, all, all of the appointments made through that spot, so that's really wonderful. They are also basically through, through the main nurse liaison that we have, Calandra Anderson, she has also personally taken on arranging vaccination appointments for school personnel. So feel free to reach out to Superintendent Watson or myself if you want assistance with that. And then through Meyer, of course, they're having mass vaccinations at Ford Field now, so it is, it is not too difficult, I, as I understand it, to get an appointment through them. The county seems to have a very good supply of vaccine at this time, and so we are, we are chugging along. We, we are behind Ohio, but, but I can say with certainty, Michigan is doing far better than, than Pennsylvania and Washington State. So it's interesting how this has played out, you know, state, state by state, but we're so far, so good. So thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. Pat, I'm just going to hand it over to you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, anyone have questions for Jennifer?
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, follow up on what Jennifer said. I heard Dr. Fauci recently say something very appropriate, don't spike the football on the five-yard line.
Very good, Howard, always getting a sports analogy from you is refreshing. Any other questions or comments? Pat, throwing it over to you?
Thank you, President Cohen. Mr. Bidlak, did you have a little more information about the kindergarten age range by chance?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that I'm giving really good information. The September 1st is a target birthday that we're using for kindergarten, turning five by September 1st. However, for developmental kindergarten, MDE does allow us to accept funding for students if they are turning five by December 1st. So that gives some flexibility into both of those kindergarten and developmental kindergarten. So I was focusing on that September 1st date, but I should have mentioned the December 1st date as well. And so you can find that on our website, developmental kindergarten. You can be five by December 1st and enroll into that option.
Thank you, President Cohen, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, Pat, general discussion.
I'm sorry, could I say one more thing about the, the health department update? I forgot about this. There was an announcement almost a week ago that persons 16 and older are eligible to be vaccinated as of April 5th. And that is anyone above 16, not, not need, not having a pre-existing health condition. So it, it may be, I was able to do a save my spot for my 17-year-old daughter. So the county is enrolling those appointments right now, so for our, our high school families.
So the county is, and Jennifer and I, I know there's like all these sites out there, is there some place, I don't know, and maybe Pat, you know, we could send out a communication for those, for that, you know, 16 and older group, where they could do a save my space? I don't know, I don't know what's out there at this point. And, and, you know, maybe we don't need to discuss it now, but that would probably be helpful. Thanks, Jennifer, for that information, you're right. April 5th is a target date. Throwing it back to Pat for general discussion?
All right, thank you, President Cohen. Corey, if you could pull up the slide with spring testing data information?
All right, everything looks okay, there we go.
Looks good. So part four, spring testing requirements, just want to give a quick update on that. So the Michigan Department of Education submitted a waiver on February 12th of 2021, asking the U.S. Department of Education to waive state assessments and accountability for this year, knowing that many school districts have benchmark data on children. The U.S. Department of Education has right to approve the entire waiver or portions of the waiver. Typically, it takes 30 to 120 days for the U.S. Department of Education to respond to the Michigan Department of Education's waiver requests. MDE said on March 15th that they will extend testing windows if the waiver is denied. As of now, MDE has not received a response as to whether or not the waiver will be approved. As such, Bloomfield Hill Schools has moved forward with planning for the M-step, My Access, and PSAT, SAT testing as required by law during the assigned testing windows. At this time, it is not known what flexibility we will have. MDE will not allow for remote testing. We are encouraging all families to be present for testing. Communication went out March 24th at 5:00 p.m., so all grades three through eight. Families about spring testing. The second communication with the survey went out on March 25th at 10:00 a.m. to all virtual families in grades three through eight. The survey will gather information BHS needs to plan for in-person testing of virtual students. Further logistics and details will be sent to families after break. The high school in Wing Lake sent specific communication to families. Thank you, President Cohen.
Any questions? I'm seeing anything in the chat, but I'll wait. Lisa?
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this. So, for example, Bloomfield virtual families who maybe, who have, whose children have not stepped foot in a, in a building this entire academic year, were asking them to come in person to take the M-step?
Correct. So the survey that went out is to gather the information to see who is going to potentially come in to take the test. The test, you know, if the waiver's not granted, the test is required by law. What we don't do is go around and round up students and force them to come into the building.
Okay, but when you say required by law, also, every single parent by law has the right to opt out, whether they're Bloomfield virtual or otherwise, correct?
There's not really a mechanism to opt out per se, right? You don't pull out the form.
They can do an email and contact their building principal.
Right, they could contact the building principal and simply say, my child will not be attending, thank you, have a nice day. There's no consequences.
Sorry, is, are there any penalties to the student who does that?
There's no penalty to the student, but there could be a penalty to the school district if we don't have 95% participation. But again, we're not in the business of rounding up students and forcing them to come into a building to take a standardized test. But we want to make sure we'll give that option to our students, and if parents bring them in, that's great, we'll be able to test them. That's why we're also asking them to fill out the survey, so we can prepare and know what size space we need, and we can get those spaces ready. I mean, kind of like we've talked about for the past 14 months. We're, we're planning for where we're at, we're planning backward, and we're planning forward. And that involves this as well. So if you're a Bloomfield virtual parent, and you're at home, and you decide, I have not been in the building at one time, I don't care if my kids are 500 feet apart from other people, I'm not coming into the building, okay, not a problem. Please let your building administrator know, hey, we'll be coming in for the test, okay? Completely understand, and it is what it is at that point. So I think it's important for parents not to get too nervous, you know, their student's not going to be held back, they're not going to not be able to graduate or get into college, it's just simply, we won't have that data point for them for this year. That's if the testing still occurs. Maybe there's a waiver that, like, this is the world of unknown, right? We could, you know, every day, I'm sure trustee Efron, she get the emails as well, what about this, what about that? Well, it depends. We need all the stuff at one time, and then we can make a decision, and every decision's so different. So if you are hearing from community members that are nervous, that are worried, please have them contact the building principal, so we can alleviate any concerns they have. No one's going to force someone to come in to take the test, it is not going to happen. Would we like them to take the test if they feel comfortable? Absolutely. If they don't, not a problem.
As long as that's the message we're sending, you know, which, like you just said, if you're not comfortable... Um, a- as long as that's the message we're sending, you know, uh, which, like you just said, if you're not comfortable, we would like you to not take it. Because we don't want uncomfortable students taking tests, and, and under any circumstance. Also, um, I, I heard you say, which was gonna be my next question, we aren't making high school SAT, sorry, SAT or PSAT a condition of high school graduation, which we have in the past done. Is that correct?
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. I apologize.
Okay.
So, uh, the PSAT has never been a graduation requirement. The email that went out, hopefully that you received, um, had information from the Bloomfield Hills High School regarding those who may be uncomfortable with taking the thing, uh, taking the test. So, uh, again, if you're a parent, and regardless of the grade your son, daughter, or, you know, uh, your child is in, reach out to the building administrator directly with your concerns, so that they can be addressed. Because all the concerns are going, some might be the same, but everyone has their own story. And we'll work with parents on an individual level, um, which is the way it should be. So if you have someone says, you know, "Trusty Afros, I've got a sophomore, she's, or he's been virtual all year," or a, a junior, "And we don't really want to go in and take the SAT. Uh, we're too nervous about it. What can we do?" Call the building administrator, they'll work with you, it will be okay. Right? We're not going to, again, force people to come in and take tests.
Okay, uh, thank you. I, that, that's, I hope, the message that um, that parents take away from our communications. And just gonna suggest that that be included on all spring testing information. That there is a parental right always, and in particular during this extremely stressful year for students, to opt out for any reason at any time. And if we're conveying that to parents, uh, in the same communication that we can convey all the other testing information to be transparent and sincere with that message, then, uh, you know, I, I think that's the, the correct way to handle it. And I thank you for, for taking that stance, because I, I know, uh, Superintendent Watson, that you echo uh, my concern about the year these kids have had. And, and not putting any undue stress on them for the purpose of making, you know, having them come to a building for the first time to take an M-step. So, thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. Um, there's no other questions. We will go to Board Business. Uh, can I get a motion? Under eleven A?
Um, I move the Board of Education reconfirm the Bloomfield Hills Schools' extended continuity of learning plan as mandated monthly by the Senate, return to learn bill package, and updated to include requirements of Public Act Three that adheres to the twenty-hour-per-week requirement as presented by the administration.
Second.
Thank you, Jennifer. Support by Howard. Any discussion? Okay, we will vote. Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Siva?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Motion passes seven oh. Um, with that, we will go to Board Business P. Jennifer?
Okay, I'm gonna try to sh- yeah, I'm gonna try to share the screen here. See how we do. So there have just been a couple of inputs, um, since I sent you guys the last draft last Friday, so try to make this as big as possible. Um, can you guys see that? Can you see the word, Doc?
Um, can you make it a little bit bigger, but?
Um, let me, yeah, let me, let me try to make the font. Let me try to make, yeah, I think I can make the words bigger and then.
Yeah, what you want to do is you want to, yeah, go to the bottom, there you go. Perfect.
Okay, all right. So, um, let, let's just go through suggested, um, the sticky points, remaining sticky points, one by one. So first of all, in, in our first um, bullet here, uh, Siva gave me some feedback that, um, that, this is wordsmithing, that brilliance may not be the best word, because it, strictly speaking, the definition of, oops, sorry about that. Um, strictly speaking, the definition of brilliance, um, implies that, you know, one, one star is brilliant because another star is not, right? So brilliance, there, there may, it, it implies a comparison. So maybe the better term is honor the uh, multifaceted talents of all of our students or uh, some, something of, of that nature.
Any comments?
I have one, President Colin.
Yep.
I, I, I really like that. I think that's a great edit.
Okay, all right, so let's see. With everybody's permission, I, I'm, let me get into track changes here, so that it's visible.
And, and, uh, Jennifer, if I could just add to that. So, so my thought there, Pat, was that if we call everybody brilliant, then we're baselining the entire, re-baselining the entire population, then you drop that brilliance back to some meme. So, uh, that was the reason, uh, I, I suggested that change.
I, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't get track changes to work right now. Um, okay. So as it, as it reads, it says, "Every student is capable of excellence, and we must work daily to cultivate and honor the multifaceted talents of all of our students."
Right.
Okay, anybody else have a comment about that? Okay, all right, so the next, um, point of discussion here is the last bullet under um, excellence, which is new a- a- as of last Friday. Um, all decisions must be evidence-based. Um, is, does anybody have any comments about that, or are people satisfied with that?
Jennifer, let me just ask, uh, we use the word evidence and not data. Is there a distinction there between those two words or not?
The, the, there, well, yeah, um, Michelle Harmela brought up the fact there, strictly speaking, there is a small difference. Um, it's very technical. So i- if you, if you say something is evidence-based, you are implying that there is proven evidence out there. Which i- i- in the realm of all things education, i- i- is, is that really the case for all things? Or are there accepted best practices that may not strictly speaking be evidence-based? Um, it, so, so that, that bit of feedback was brought up. Um, I prefer this term to data, just because a- at this point, I feel like the word data is very hackneyed. And, you know, pretty much it's meaningless. Um, and so I, I felt that this phrase was a little bit more substantial. But I think all of these things are, are a bit of hair splitting.
Uh, and I, I'm not disagreeing at all. Um, what we're, the, the, the point of that, this whole thing is whether it's data or evidence, you know, you, and, and data or evidence can be qualitative or quantitative. But what you're trying to get away from is deciding from your gut. "I think blah, 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 and therefore that's what we should do, because I think."
Right, right.
And, uh, whether, and so you need that thinking based upon something, whether it's evidence or data. Uh, I, you're right, it's, it's sort of a hair split.
A- anybody else have feelings about, about the statement as, as written?
I realize you probably can't see my hand. I don't know how many stu-
Oh, no, I can't, I'm sorry. That sounds, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, so, uh, I guess my question is more leaning toward the "all decisions must." Uh, are we relating this to the, any decision within the district, or is this education-focused decisions? Is it student-centered decisions? Is it staff-focused decisions? I'm, I'm just wanting to know.
My assumption was that it applied to everything to do in the district. Um, you know, and, and again, not all decisions are, lend themselves to be evidence-based. You know, how, how we spend certain bond dollars is not going to be evidence-based. But the, the point being that we are, we have a culture of making rational decisions based on information, as, as Howard previously.
I got you. I'm not disagreeing. I just think that if we, if we say "all decisions must be evidence-based," does that, that also includes any decision that we make as a board? Um, so I, I'm just.
I understand what you're saying.
So, um, should, should there be some sort of caveat that it details what decisions we would more deem toward being evidence-based?
Or we could say something like, "As applicable to the direct situation, all decisions must be evidence-based," or, or something of that nature.
Jennifer, if I could add to Michelle's point.
Yeah.
We could add the phrase "wherever possible" at the end of that sen- sentence, right?
Where- wherever possible or wherever applicable?
Wherever applicable.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, did, what do you think of that, Michelle?
It works for me.
Okay.
That gives us a little, gives us a little wiggle room, if, you know, where it, where it doesn't fit.
John?
I think you can take out "all" then, if, if we do that, um, just for wordsmithing.
Yep. Gosh, you lawyers are so good with language of it. Okay, so now it says, "Decisions must be evidence-based wherever applicable."
I, I, I like this. I was thinking, as we were kind of brainstorming, that I was, uh, that we could change the word "must" to "should." But I like the, leaving the "must" and putting the, the escape clause of "wherever applicable," so that it, uh, doesn't get applied a hundred percent of the time where it doesn't fit.
Okay, um, okay, so, um, the next sentence for, the next bullet for discussion is our, our first bullet under equity. Um, John had some suggestions, and I massaged it a little further. And I should have emailed this to you guys earlier and forgot to. So, um, the, the, before we get into that, though, what, I had this in a previous draft, and then it sort of disappeared. And what, what do you guys think about footnoting the term "educational debt" with the reference in the literature, which is right here, Gloria Ladson Billings? Um, such that as if our community members, when our community members read the value statements, um, they have, they can, they have something to refer to? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
I, I think it's, I think it's important, only because when I read, um, debt, I was thinking, um, more, uh, looking at deficiencies. Uh, and so I wasn't really sure, when I looked up educational deficiency culture, it came up more re- readily than I saw "education debt." So I, when I thought about, uh, that particular statement.
So I, I, Michelle, are you saying, are, are you concerned that "educational debt" is a deficiency statement, or I'm, can you clarify?
No, I looked, I looked up "educational debt" because I wasn't sure what that meant. Um, in this particular statement, what I did find more readily was "educational," um, uh, defi- deficiency culture is what I found more, was "educational deficiency culture," uh, more than I did find, I didn't have "educational debt." But I, I appreciate the reference, so maybe I'll check out the reference that you have at the bottom to make me understand why.
Yeah, I can, I can email that to you, Superintendent Watson, share that with us, um, a few months ago. And there may be other references we could also add. Um, okay, so.
Well, Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, Superintendent Watson shared it with us a year ago, I think in the spring of two thousand, uh, twenty, which might mean that the, the three new school board members might not have been exposed to that. So that's maybe where the, where the, the gap there is. And second, um, I like the footnoting concept on, on terms that, uh, might not be clear to us or the community. As we, uh, finalize this and dot the i's and cross the t's, one thing to think about maybe is going through a lot of the lingo and eduspeak, uh, that's, uh, in different places in this document. And, um, either footnoting or, and/or, um, maybe using technology and putting a hot link in to, um, to the, so when it's on the, on the website, that all people have to do is click on the, uh, on the term, and they'll go directly to, um, either the, the entire document. But maybe even, um, a way to put together a glossary, uh, of some terms. So in like one or two sentences, instead of a five or ten-page paper, they can find the definition of some of these words.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, I agree with you, but I do think this is the only term like that in this document. And I, I was planning to hyperlink it and footnote it. So you, you could do either or, just look at the reference, um, or read the article easily.
Uh, uh, another term, uh, "growth mindset" is another one.
Um, okay, I, we could, we could ref- we could reference that term, yep, with the mindset book.
Um, "a whole child." Uh, so I think, you know, we, we can go through and sort of find things that mean things within the educational world, but don't necessarily, uh, translate directly to, uh, uh, the general population.
Okay, so, okay, so before, um, we move into, uh, John's suggested edit, um, because his already accomplishes this, but I, I just wanted to point out that e- even if we stick with the original wording, which is right, right here, we, we wanna, we, we feel that, I, I feel that we should add the word "outcomes" um, to the sentence. So, so this, this was not here, um, before today. So maintain equitable educational experiences and outcomes for all students. So just, just introducing this concept, um, and then I'm gonna scroll over here to the right. Um, so John crafted a, a sentence, I, I think maybe, I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, John, but to clarify more of the backdrop, maybe, of, of educational debt.
Right, I, I was confused, like Michelle, as to, I, I kind of knew what it was trying to say, but I, I, I also was, I'd Googled the term and was trying to figure out exactly, uh, what was meant by it. And, um, you sent me over, uh, the article, and I read it. And I tried to pull out a couple of terms that were common, that kind of drew back to the term, so you, it was sort of defined in, in the statement. So it, it wasn't as confusing to a person that didn't know the term. Um, but either way, I, I, I don't know, I, I was just, uh, rewriting it. But if we footnote it, I, I'm not sure that it needs to be changed.
Okay, well, what, what I could do, because then I took your sentence and I just made it a little shorter. So why, why don't I just read all three of them? And, and maybe we could just quickly, you know, put up a finger, you know, if we, which one, they all say the same thing. They just say them in slightly different ways. Does that, does that work for everybody?
I'll speak for you.
Okay, so cho- choice number one, which was the, basically the draft that went out last Friday, is, reads, "We believe we must routinely critically examine and dismantle the educational debt present throughout our system in order to create." in order to create and maintain equitable educational experiences and outcomes for all students." Okay, and then, um, number two, "We must critically examine the educational debt created by our past and present economic and socio-political systems in order to eliminate it and/or its effects on our students' educational experiences and outcomes by routinely adapting to provide equitable educational experiences for all students." Okay, and then, John, I took the liberty of just taking that and just trying to make it a little smaller. And I, I, so this is number three. "We must critically examine and regularly adapt our efforts to eliminate the effects of educational debt created by our past and present economic and socio-political systems on student outcomes by providing equitable educational experiences for all students."
I like the combined version, number three, because I liked some of the things that were highlighted in what John stated.
So you want number three, Michelle?
Yeah, I, 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 I like number three. I think it, it still includes the, the great points that were in John's statement.
Okay, so I, I mean, I don't know if we're actually vote, well, we won't, we won't vote till we vote, but can, can I take a straw poll? Which, which one do you prefer?
I'm sorry, what was that, Jennifer?
Um, which of the three forms of this first equity bullet do you prefer?
You're asking me or you're asking everyone individually?
Well, I, I, yeah, I, I'm asking everybody, but I'm just calling on you.
I actually, I, you know, I, I like what, you know, I, I kind of like your summary, um, on the side, you know, uh.
Okay, num, so number three?
Yes.
Okay.
Je- Jennifer, may I, uh, ask John, considering John's, uh, version, which is number two, and Jennifer's adaptation of his words are number three. John, uh, are you okay with Jennifer's, uh, wordsmithing of your proposal?
No, we must do mine. No, I'm just kidding. It's not, no, I, I like.
Friendly amendment.
No, I like it. Uh, we've been kind of working, I, I've been working in the shadows on this and, uh, Jennifer has done a nice job. Uh, I thought it was too long and I, when I sent it over, I said, uh, if anyone could, uh, fix it a little bit, maybe this might work. And so I do like Jennifer's.
Hey, uh, Lisa, what do you think?
I like three.
Okay, uh, Howard?
I'll go along with the author, um, that will go with number three.
Uh, well, we, we all authored this because we all, it all started with the first one, which, you know, okay.
I know.
And so, Siva?
Uh, number three, please.
Okay, okay, all right, so I'm just gonna, gonna put this over here. All right. All right, why it's being very weird when I share the screen. Okay, I will fix that. All right, um, but I really should fix it now so we can all look at it before we vote on it.
If it's a screen share problem, what you could do is go off the screen share, make the changes and come back in a thirty seconds or minute. If that's what the hiccup.
Okay, um, all right, let me just, I'm just gonna undo this so I don't lose it. There we go. Okay, all right, so the very last item for discussion was this first bullet under respect and inclusion. And, uh, to, to that point, this was sort of before last Friday. Um, Michelle, you had asked at our last meeting, you, you had just brought up the word inclusion. I don't think you were even trying to make a suggestion about it, but I felt that it's important and I thought that it fit best as a header for this section. So, first of all, I should mention that this morning, um, Howard pointed out to me that, that the, the term gender identity was not here, uh, so we added that in, if that's okay with everybody. Um, and then the only other item for discussion in this section was whether we use the word must or should, um, in this first bullet.
I, I'm just going to recommend that this be, uh, you know, run through our, um, run through our social and emotional, uh, learning director so that it's consistent with the way we word other things, um, under the blanket of inclusion. We, we're not consistent with some of the terms that we're using. So I don't have a problem approving it with minor, um, updates for consistency, but I do think that should be done.
Um, okay, sure, yes, and I think, I think to your, to that point, Lisa, once we vote on this, I think we're going to get feedback from PTOC and the Student Intern Council. And, you know, if we, if we need to make a couple of minor tweaks, we, we can just bring it back to the table. Um, so, go ahead.
I'm, I'm sorry, Jennifer, to your, your last point, so I know on this, we're, you know, we're technically, after we go through this, we're voting on it. Is your, is the idea to bring it to like, obviously at Lisa's point, Margaret, Student Intern Council, and then, um, you know, whatever other groups who want to synthesize this and then vote on it at our subsequent meetings? So we're, we're not going to vote on it tonight?
It, that's fine. I mean, I, I just, I kind of want to get, get this done. So I, I, I would prefer we vote on it in draft form at least and just, um, you know, make, just put, put some kind of official approval behind it and with the understanding that if there needs to be a little bit more wordsmithing, that we have the flexibility to do that.
We, we could amend it. Okay, no, that's fine. I just want to understand the expectation for, you know, we go through it on board.
Sure.
We're, okay, good, got it. Now, my question on that, when we say, and maybe, I don't know if Margaret or someone's on or Pat, when we say must versus should, um, I'm, I'm trying to understand, right? We, we do say must slash should and, and we're going to make distinction. Every student should be known by name, strengths and, I'm a should person versus a must seems definite. I don't know if Pat, you have a, it, it doesn't, you know, your, your preference, must versus should?
Let me think and process just for a second, because there's pros and cons to both.
Well, Pat, while Pat thinks about that, I'll give him some, oh, go ahead, Pat.
I'm sorry.
No, I was going to give you a couple more minutes to think about it.
I, I would say. No, no, it's good. I, I just want to think about it because it's really important. Um, my preference, my vote would be for should. When you say must, it kind of feels like a mandate that you're giving.
Yeah, that's, that's my thinking. I'm always, I'm a should person, must just seems definite. Should is, that's the expectation. Must, you know, so I'm a should person. That's my opinion.
Right, and must also implies discipline.
Okay, you did. I have, we use must a lot in a lot of these. I have one, 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 um, in, in lieu of the one you just created in equity, uh, and it made me think I was reading these again. I just had one question in, in this space. And I know we are only, you know, looking at bullet number one right now, what other people think. It, could we, in bullet number three, can we include, um, language and class? Um, and, and the reason why I say that is, you know, for inclusivity, um, uh, various language, we, we are a community of many languages. And so I think that would be great. And class, from the last few things we talked about with, uh, regards to socioeconomic status. So I'd love for maybe class to also be included.
It, what about social class, just to clarify it, or socioeconomic class?
Um, I would not put socioeconomic class, that would just.
Okay, it's just class?
Class or social class would be, I think social class might be fine, but class is typically, um, what I've seen. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything to that, that list, but I also would for should. That was your original question, so I, I would go for should.
Jennifer?
And I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Jennifer, I, I'm sorry, Howard, Jennifer, I forget. I know Lisa asked this. Has this been, have we got, have we given this through Margaret or not? Uh, I, I forgot. Has she blessed this yet?
Um.
Not, not saying, yeah.
Are, are you here, Margaret?
Not saying she should bless it now, I'm just saying.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure that you've seen the whole draft, but I know you saw the one, the one equity bullet that we just discussed, but, but yeah, go for it.
Yeah, I have seen the whole draft and Pat and I had several discussions about it, so I, I'm comfortable with what's here. Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Okay, um, on the must should dichotomy, um, you know, must is a very, is an absolute. Should has got a lot of wiggle room, so I'm trying to figure out something in between. I don't know whether I like this because it's a little wordier, but it is expected that every student is to be known by name, strengths and needs.
The, the only problem with that is it doesn't move, it doesn't work with the we believe, um, entry of all these sentences.
Okay. But you see where I'm trying to go? I don't, I.
I sure do.
If we can come up with a phraseology that works with we believe, you know, and expectation is a little stronger than a, I, I think.
We, we could make it.
Stronger than should, I think.
We could make it pass a voice and say, we believe every student is expected to be known by name, strengths and needs.
Okay.
That would be the way around that.
Okay, what does everyone else think?
Here's my two cents. It, it sounds a little awkward. Must or should? There, there's not an accountability measure for any of these things because they're impossible to measure. So, you know, the, the attorney in me thinks should i- is a throwaway word and must is the only thing that, y- you know, uh, but even if we say must, there, there's, there is no or else accountability. So it is just a word. So it's whatever other, everybody else, th- there's not an attached, um, duty, certainly not a legal obligation, um, to any of these things. So I, I think at this point it becomes what reads best and what has the most impact.
Uh, I, I do agree with that and I also think just for sheer consistency sake, as Michelle said, must is all over this piece of paper and so maybe that just is weird. If, if this statement is less, um, promoted or as, if you will, uh, than the other ones, I think that would be a little odd.
So.
I think. I'm, I'm, I'm really okay with any way we say it because I think we all know what we're talking about, so.
I think the cut for me is the, is the strength of the needs of the.
Sorry, Michelle?
I think for me, the part that I'm probably most, um, are the strengths and needs. Um, I know we should probably definitely know every student by name. Uh, but I think for me, I think that the must with the strengths and needs, you know, for us to be able to, you know, um, to meet some of our o- other goals, uh, we think, I think we would need to know that information about our student population. So that part I definitely, uh, would think should be a must or a need. I, I was struggling with the should for the name, um, as we all are trying to grow and know all the names of the students in our buildings. I think most principals I know know all the students, um, but as we are all going to be held accountable for this, I think the strengths and needs for me is a must, uh, and names, I, I, I'm growing to learn. So, uh, I, I don't know, this is my, I picked should because it was, it went with name for me, but I think we must know the strengths and needs of our students, so I would agree with that part. But I liked Howard's suggestion too.
Or we could say every student will be known by name, strengths and needs. And that implies, oh, the learning curve, but the commitment as well.
Can I suggest something, Trustee Matlow?
Please.
What about something like this? Uh, "We aspire to create an atmosphere where every child is recognized by their individual uniqueness and feels they have a trusted adult that knows them by name, strengths and needs."
I like that because what I was going to say is this doesn't mean that every student is known by every person. It just means that they're known in their learning community, I think, as opposed to every board member knows every student, every, you know, administrator, like it's, that's not what it meant to me. And so I thought must was okay. So what, uh, Superintendent Watson said is, uh, covers that in a better way than someone trying to interpret it, I think.
Could you speak it again slowly, slowly so I can type it out?
Would, would it be beneficial if I just typed it in chat and you can cut and paste it from there? Or do you want me just to go over it?
If you could just say it, because cutting and pasting doesn't seem to be working right now.
No problem. "We aspire to create an atmosphere where every child is recognized by their unique, sorry, by their individual uniqueness and feels they have a trusted adult that knows them by name. Oh, I can't remember the, drawing a blank now. It was the end of what we had before, knows them by name.
Strengths and needs.
Thank you, Trustee Baron. I owe you, I owe you, I'll get you like a blizzard one day. Thank you.
Okay, so in or, in order to fit with we believe, we, we would say, we, we believe we must create. Is, is that, is that okay?
Yep.
And can we, Superintendent Watson, is it okay if we just strike? I- i- individual and uniqueness is, is redundant? Could we just get rid of one of them?
Yes.
Okay, recognized by their, how about by their individuality? Pardon? Yeah.
Yeah.
We must create, we believe we must create an atmosphere where every child is recognized by their individuality and feels they have a trusted adult that know, can I put in who here? Who knows them by name, strengths and needs?
Trustee Matlow?
Yes, sir.
Nope, that looks good.
Yeah.
I like, I like, I like the feel because I think that addresses mental health.
How about, or instead of knows them by, say, knows their name, strengths and needs? It's just wordsmithing, but.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Anything else on this part?
Um, no, that was, that was it really. Um, so I, what I probably should do is pull this out of sharing, finish the, the one edit of that one bullet. And then, uh, do, should we read through it and, and call a vote? Or I could just repost it? We could read it silently and, and call a vote? What do you want to do? What do you want to do?
Why don't we, why don't we do this, because we're probably in between, you know, maybe a break time, I mean, we could put it up and people can take, we can take a five to 10 minutes, let's say a 10 minute break and read, and then we can go into the vote.
Okay, great.
Uh, let me just make one pure formatting suggestion or request, that when everything is all said and done, we make it such that it all fits on one page?
Uh, I, yes, we can do that by messing with the margins.
I- i- if, if necessary, there are lots of ways to skin that cat, but instead of having it carry over into two pages, it should be, you know, summarized in one way and on a page.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll make sure that ultimately it's a one-page PDF, re- realize on our website, you know, it's just gonna look the way it looks, so.
But, but when you do a PDF, exactly.
Yeah.
Alright, alright, so, so well, right now, Jennifer, if you put it up on the screen, um, combination break, we'll come back at eight twenty-two, people have time to read it, um, take a break, and then at eight twenty-two, we will call for a vote on this.
A- and, uh, Mr. President, I think would be a wonderful thing for the public if we actually, uh, read it, uh, out loud.
You mean as part of the vote?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we've been, we've been doing bits and pieces, but to try to pull it all together, and we, we only hit maybe, you know, 20% of the whole thing, but just so that the public, uh, understands exactly what our, uh, what our core beliefs and values are.
But if she's gonna post it, doesn't it work the same because we're not lying?
Yeah, the people, everyone will see it, including us.
Well, wha- whatever the, whatever the group wants to do is fine.
Alright, it's just gonna take me like one more minute to, to make it pretty, and then I'll, I'll reshare.
Okay, alright, so we'll say it's eight thirteen now, we'll come back with people reading it and the community reading it at, let's just say, eight twenty-five, that's, gives you another minute or two to put it up, and it gives everyone 10 minutes.
I apologize, I'm gonna power, I think it's important that we also for, um, uh, that is read, I'm sorry, I do apologize, I agree with that for inclusivity.
So Howard, when you come back, do you want to read it?
Um, if Jennifer puts on the screen, I will be glad to.
She, she, she'll get it up there.
Okay, see you in a few.
Okay. Hey, Jennifer? Sorry, you guys hear me, right? We're not back yet. Keith, um, Keith has a suggestion, so Keith, are you on?
Do we have Keith?
While we're waiting, while we're waiting, Jennifer, well, go ahead, Paul.
And he, he wrote this, I mean, he'll jump in, but he wrote, um, he sent me, he said, by most modern understandings, have to and must imply compulsion, should imply obligation without compulsion, and shall implies firm intention of commitment. Um, I, I couldn't see it, he had a hand up, he, he wanted to make that comment, so just.
I, I'm back, I, I did, I, it got missed in that last, uh, round of, of talks here, and I, I realized that you probably just didn't see me on here, so, um, I just wanted to throw that out there, I don't want to throw a wrench in the process, but I know we're, we're also choosing some belief and value statements that are gonna live on for, you know, some time, and we want to really, um, be behind those and make sure the intent of what we're putting down in words is there. Um, and just want to make sure that the word must is implying what we want it to imply.
What would you, Keith, what would you suggest? I mean, would you suggest not must, is that, you know?
I like, yeah, I like the word shall, um, because the word of, of what it implies then, right? It implies the intent, and I think in a lot of, at, at least in some of these, what we're trying to imply is the intent to do that. Um, that really came from maybe the, the one under equity, which we ended up, um, completely, was it equity or wherever it was that Pat brought in a new, uh, new statement? Um, especially in that one, we were talking about knowing the students as the individual, um, by their name, strengths. Uh, that one, I, I felt like it really was, that was the intent of it. Um, whereas it, that, that must just felt like there was this compulsatory piece. Um, and, and I don't know if that's what we're looking for, and maybe it is, so I don't, this is, again, your document, I just wanted to throw that out there as, uh, good for God.
Thank you, I, I, I get it, I just, my concern is every one of these sentences starts with we believe, so we believe we shall, I, I think is a little bit awkward.
Jennifer, if you move down to that, that one item.
Yeah.
Um, what Pat's, uh, rephrasing of it is, is we're not saying must know, we're saying we, we, the district must create an atmosphere. So this is no longer back to an individual, uh, and that they feel that they have, feel that they have a trusted adult. So we're not putting this on any individual, um, employee. This is saying that we as an organization will, must create an atmosphere, so it's behoven upon all of us, not, um.
Right, but that, that's, that's not what Keith is saying, Keith is saying the, the, the verb must regardless in all of these sentences, is it appropriate, is it not appropriate?
I.
What should we do?
I think as an organization, we should be insistent of these things as an organization that we do.
I agree.
Again, it, it, you know, again, his, I mean, he gave a, you know, he gave feedback, um, you know, it's, like you said, it's our, our document, we got all the feedback, I think we're at a point, right, at this point, um, we agree with it. Howard, you're gonna read it, and, um, we'll vote on it.
Yeah, Jennifer, if you could.
But I, yeah, I mean, if, if anyone else, you know, has strong feelings about the word must, please, please, uh, speak your mind, so we can talk about it further.
What, what about will, W-I-L-L, is, does that imply the same?
No.
Again, again, I, I, I mean, I hear my comments in earlier, uh, wh- whether I probably agree with Keith on not using must, but, you know, we went back and forth, we agreed on must, uh, and I, I think we're at a point where we should, you know, we, we came to a conclusion, we're ready to read it, ready to vote on it. That's just, that's just mine, we, we can go back and forth the next couple of hours, or we can move forward, and amend, and, and we could always amend this, right? We're gonna get some feedback from some student groups, we could always tweak it after the fact, but getting Jennifer to your point, we could always, this can be voted on as a draft, and we could always amend and change some of the wording if we need to.
S- so, Jennifer, just for pure simplicity of reading, uh, if you could go to view and do full page.
Howard, I think John was trying to get your, get the attention of Jennifer, are you still, do we want to say something, John?
My God, I hate technology.
I could just see you.
Full page, where is that?
Uh, it's not where I'm. Never mind, it'll be fine the way it is.
Like that?
Your ver- that's fine, your version is a little different than what I was looking at, this will be fine, yep.
You could do, uh, the multi-page and then we could see the whole.
That, that, for me to read this, this is fine, and then all Jennifer will do is.
The only thing on the second page is the footnote.
Yeah.
So. Yeah.
That's fine. Okay, are you ready, are we ready for me to read?
Go for it, Howard.
Okay. These are the core beliefs and values of the Bloomfield Hills Schools. We believe, well, and there are, uh, uh, subsections in the section called excellence. We believe every student is capable of excellence, and we must work daily to cultivate, uh, to cultivate and honor the multifaceted talents of all of our students. We believe high expectations, goals and standards must be set for all students and staff based on relevant data with accountability for results. We believe all student experiences are important, and the whole child must be educated to strive for academic, for excellence in academic, artistic, physical, interpersonal, social, vocational and avocational pursuits. We believe our district must aspire, uh, inspire a passion for lifelong learning in students and staff. We believe decisions must be evidence-based wherever applicable. In, in the section innovation, we believe we must foster and support social, emotional wellness, curiosity, uh, creativity, open-mindedness, critical thinking and collaborative problem-solving in our students and staff. We believe we must embrace a growth mindset so staff and students willingly take on challenges. We believe we must cultivate an environment where we honor student choice, student voice and flexibility in creating and implementing curricula and instruction. In the section equity. We believe we must critically examine and regularly ad- adapt our efforts to eliminate the efforts, the effects, excuse me, the effects of educational debt created by our past and present economic and sociopolitical systems on student outcomes by providing equitable educational experiences for all students. We believe all resources must be directed with the goal of achieving educational equity according to need so that all students have the opportunity to learn and develop to their highest potential. In the section respect and inclusion. We believe we must create an atmosphere where every child is recognized by their individuality and feels they have a trusted adult who knows their name, strengths and needs. We believe every student deserves a trusting and empathetic environment where everyone feels safe and valued. We believe recognizing uniqueness and dignity of individuals of every race, religion, ethnicity, primary language, class, gender, sexual orientation, gender identity, learning style and ability is a critical to our success. We believe we must value and build upon the strengths of our diverse community. In the final section entitled ethics. We believe we must cultivate an environment in which all students and adults take responsibility for their individual and collective behavior. We believe we must cultivate a culture of collegiality, collaboration, transparency and honesty. We believe students should become citizens who care about and contribute to our community and the world. And finally, we believe collaborative partnerships with families, students, schools and community are needed to support our public school system as the cornerstone of our democracy.
Thanks, Howard, can I get a motion?
Can't even navigate to this, is my mic on? Oh, okay, yes, um, I move the Board of Education approve the core, well, do I have to amend the, the motion, I, I'm gonna say it a little bit. I, I would like to propose a motion that says I move the Board of Education approve the core values as presented, um, with, with a right of, of minor future editing a- as, as advised by, um, our community.
That's fine, Jennifer, you want to read that again, one more time, and then we'll get support?
I move the Board of Education approve the core values as presented, uh, retaining the right to make, um, small edits as advised by, uh, feedback driven by components of our community.
Does that support? Save a support, okay, um, I think we've had enough discretion. Howard?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Diva?
Yes.
Okay, I'm a yes, motion passed with seven oh, congratulations, everyone. Um, I know a lot of work was put into that, thank, thank you, and we will move on to part B, uh, Michelle Hamala is going to be working with us on our mission and vision statement. Turn it over to Michelle.
All right, thank you very much, can you just give me a thumbs up if you can hear me? All right, perfect, I'm gonna share my screen, so give me a minute to, uh, put the PowerPoint up, you should have a copy of that, and then also, trustees, if you would make sure you have the Jamboard open in another tab, so when we get to that activity, you're ready to type in the Jamboard, uh, that'll just make things smoother, and just by way of planning ahead, um, the original plan for this work was to get a draft of the vision and mission done tonight. That facilitation will take about an hour and a half, 90 minutes, which is, uh, eight thirty-seven right now, so how's your stamina? All good, ready to go? All right, and I'm gonna keep it interactive, all right, I'm gonna keep it interactive so that, uh, all of you have a chance to stay awake, so let me share my screen real quick here.
Michelle, let me just ask on a pure process basis, if we type the things into the Jamboard, will that be displaying on, on the screens?
Yes, it will be, uh, at the point that, that activity is what we're doing.
Okay, because just for, for, for OMA purposes, we have to make sure that all that is open to the public.
Yep, it'll be on the screen, and it's your district's document, so you will have a record of it as well.
Very good, thank you.
You're welcome, all right, so let me put this in slideshow mode, can you see it as a full screen? Okay, very good, all right, so thank you, um, we're gonna start tonight with just a quick revisit to the book study that we're doing together, um, and thinking about some of the things we're practicing and working on as a group. Um, and the language is coming out of the text, the speed of trust, and we want to look at those behaviors within our work, especially as you've been at it already for two and a half hours, and sometimes fatigue sets in, so we want to make sure we're working with those practices that promote trust and produce dividends for the group, and I've highlighted a few of them from the text on the screen, and we've had some of those conversations in our work together as we're studying this text. Uh, in addition, I want to remind us all that as we've been working together, everybody's been talking about how important it is that everybody's here for all of the students, and everybody wants the team to be tremendously effective. So as we work together, we want to assume positive intent, uh, weigh the impact of our own words and actions, and think about task conflict as being very helpful, and you had some really great dialogue around the core values, and hopefully uh, we'll have some of that wonderful dialogue as we move into the mission and the vision statements as well. Uh, and I'd like to point out a couple of things we've talked about, uh, around careful listening and difference spotting. So as we are hearing each other share their ideas around the mission and the, uh, vision, think about how what people are saying may be different than your own, and how we can come to common language, just like you did in the core values. And there are some prompts on this screen if you need to ask people clarifying questions, so we practice the kinds of things we've been talking about in the book study. So just to put that in front of you, and then a little Michelle humor, as I always try and do in all of the things I facilitate. things I facilitate, I've got a wonderful yellow flag that I'll throw on the field if needed. Again, just to pause if we need to, to regroup and come back to the focus at hand. So I really do have a yellow flag to throw. If you see this waving, then I'm gonna have us kind of pause for a minute and then regroup and go back to the task. And again, part of this is me thinking about how long your meetings last, and we're trying to get a lot done. So I'll try and help facilitate in that way. A couple of items, just to put everybody on the same page. Right now, we're working on vision and mission statement. Strategic planning happens in a lot of different ways in organizations. So sometimes people aren't sure, well, what is the vision and what is the mission and how are they different? So a couple of bullet points to help everybody with that. Vision is your direction, and you can think about where you want to be some years from now. There's no magic to how many, but most literature would talk about three to 10 years. And then your mission is your focus. Think about it as what Bloomfield Hills does, for whom, and why. Think about it as how you want to be different. And the sequence you're working on, you just worked on your values. Now we're gonna work on vision and then mission. All of these should align, and they align to these components that are also a part of your strategic plan. However, we aren't gonna touch on any of the goals, objectives, or strategies. That's work either you've done or will do at a future point. Pat, do you want to briefly share the feedback process for the vision and mission statement? I think it's similar to the values, but would you clarify that with the group before we go further?
Sure. We'll continue with the same process we've used for the feedback. So we'll kind of get our drafts and we'll share it out with the PTOC, with our board interns, giving them the opportunity to provide their insights and inputs as well.
Thank you, Pat. Okay, in the slides, you'll see some previous vision and mission statements from Bloomfield Hills. And what I'd like to do is ask you as board members to read them. And I'm not gonna have you read them silently. I'm gonna call on you to read them out loud. There's two reasons. I want to have you stay active. And the other one is so everybody can hear them and think about the things you've done in the past. And they may help you think about what your vision and mission are going to be in the future. So John, would you mind reading the 2009 vision and mission statements?
Sure. Vision: Become a global education leader acknowledged for the finest comprehensive curriculum and instruction. And mission: Enable learners to become architects of their futures, building on a foundation of scholarship, citizenship, service, and integrity.
Thank you, John. And Howard, would you read the 2018 versions that came from the strategic plan of collaborative effort?
Well, I will. I think there might be a slight timing thing, because I don't think it was 2018 that we ended up with these. I think it was an earlier generation, but I will definitely read it. Vision: Become a nationally recognized lighthouse district acknowledged for the finest comprehensive curriculum and instruction. And the mission, the mission of BHS is to enable learners to become architects of their future, building on the foundation of scholarship, citizenship, service, and integrity.
Awesome. Thank you. And if there needs to be a correction there, so correct it.
You can see the similarity, almost identical between the, what you say is 2009 and the 2018.
Right. Thank you. All right. Now I'm going to first ask Jennifer if she would give a little bit of background on this draft version of the 2019 to 2023 Bloomfield Forward Strategic Plan, these particular vision, mission statements. And there were some goals as well. They're not a part of this document. So just so everybody knows where these came from, Jennifer, would you share that briefly?
Yeah, of course. So a strategic planning committee was convened by the administration in October of 2018. These were about 50 to 60 individuals and met for, I believe, four, five sessions, I think. And the outcome of those meetings were the four goal areas of the strategic plan with their sub-objectives. Subsequent to those meetings of the larger group, a smaller group was convened, if I remember, Paul, help me out here, but I think it was just, was it one work session? I think it was just one where.
It was a one-work session. Yep.
Yeah, where about a dozen persons, a smaller subset of that group, worked on crafting these two statements you see in front of you.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. And Michelle, would you mind reading these two statements for us?
Yes.
Bloomfield Forward Strategic Plan 2019 through 2023 draft. Vision: Bloomfield Hills Schools will lead the nation in educating and empowering every learner every day with compassion and integrity in a welcoming environment. Our mission: Bloomfield Hills Schools will deliver comprehensive, challenging, and inspiring education in a community that equips all learners to become architects for their future.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Okay, now what we're going to do is we're gonna visit those again, but this time we're going to put the lens of the bullet points for what a vision is and what a mission is. And the reason I'm doing this is to get your thinking patterned to crafting your new statements or revising the 2019, 2020, 23 draft. So when we look at the vision statement and we look at the idea that it's the direction and it describes the future at the time it was written, Jennifer, I'm gonna ask you, can you just, by reading that vision, and again, you don't have to read it out loud, answer the question, what did Bloomfield Hills want to look like in its future when this particular vision was written? Do the 2009.
Yeah, I think, I think it's pretty straightforward. I think the vision was to be a leader and have the finest curriculum and instruction.
Excellent. Thank you. And I, and there's no right or wrong. I'm just trying to get people's brains thinking in the direction of creation. Siva, could you look at the 2009 mission and speak about what Bloomfield Hills is doing, for whom? And you may not be able to answer why if you weren't a part of it. But if you can answer why, given the things that are here, feel free to ad lib on that if you'd like.
Sure. I will try it, Michelle. So looking at the 2009 mission statement, it looks like BHS is, was planning to offer, offer a foundation of scholarship, citizenship, service, and integrity that would enable its learners, i.e. its students, to become architects of their futures.
Thank you very much. And going on to 2018, the same idea, remember focus. And then, oops, I got those mixed up. Sorry about that. I, I'm gonna switch the order. I thought I caught all my changes. So vision is going to be your direction. So look to the mission side, but read the vision. Paul, sorry for all of that, but can you follow along with it and give the future of 2018?
So what did you mix up again?
So look under, look under vision. The bullet points for vision really need to be under mission and vice versa. So your vision is 2018. Describe the future as it was planned way back then.
So, okay, so the vision is, the mission of BHS is to enable learners to become architects of their future, building on a foundation of.
I'm gonna give you the flag. I'm throwing the flag at myself. I'm throwing the flag at myself. So you're reading the mission. The mission is in the right spot. The bullets above it are wrong. So look to the bullets above the vision. See where vision is?
Yeah.
And the bullets say focus, what does BHS do for whom and why? Now read the mission and say that.
All right. So you're saying the vision should be direction, again.
Yeah.
You know what? I'll just read the vision. All right.
Okay.
The vision is the direction, describes the future three to 10 years from now. The 2018 vision: Become a nationally recognized lighthouse district acknowledged for the finest comprehensive curriculum and instruction. And the mission, which is the focus and what BHS does, for whom and why, how BHS wants to be different. 2018 mission, the mission of BHS is to enable learners to become architects of their future, building on a foundation of scholarship, citizenship, service, and integrity.
Thank you. And thank you for rescuing my own penalty. And on that again.
After, after, after two hours and 50 minutes, I'm glad I could pick that up.
Thank you. And again, as Howard aptly pointed out earlier, these were very similar to the ones previous. So I'm gonna shift slides and hopefully I didn't make that same mistake again. No, I did not. Lisa, I'm gonna ask you to look at the vision for the current draft, which is 19 to 23, and read it. And then just tell us about what that is saying about describing the future.
The vision says Bloomfield Hills Schools will lead the nation in educating and empowering every learner every day with compassion and integrity in a welcoming environment.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to read the mission as well?
Sure, go ahead.
Bloomfield Hills Schools delivers comprehensive, challenging, and inspiring education in a community that equips all learners to become architects of their futures.
Good. And so in each of these, you're looking for vision, what's the future gonna be? And mission, what does Bloomfield Hills do for whom and why? So be thinking of that pattern. So now what we need to do is we need to think about alignment. You just went through adopting, at least in a draft form, your core beliefs and values, the categories listed off to the left with the addition under respect of and inclusion, if you can kind of reflect on those. And what I'd like you to do for just a couple of minutes is think about the ways in which these beliefs and values are aligned to these draft vision and mission statements. Now, you do not have to keep these current drafts. However, you may want to, or you may want to just edit them slightly or a potential rewrite. But a good starting point is you have them. So think about the alignment. And I want you to talk about ways in which they are aligned, so people can hear other people's thinking on that. And then if you have anything you think is not aligned or is missing. And you have the PowerPoint slide, so I want you to keep, do you have your PowerPoint packet with you if they put the Jamboard up? Because then the screen will go away. So do you have your packet to have the vision and mission in front of you? And if you would, then get to the slide. That way you'll see the vision and mission. And if you'd give me a thumbs up when you have those, I won't let them take the screen away and put the Jamboard up until I see your thumbs up. So I've seen Lisa, Howard. Thank you. I can't see everybody.
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not following what we're supposed to be doing here.
So we're gonna take the screen away because we have to put the Jamboard up, Jennifer? So I just want to make sure you have a copy of the vision and mission from 19, the 2019 23, which is in your packet that you received.
Yeah.
So as long as you have that, they can take the screen away. Otherwise, you will not have the screen in front of you. Okay, so I'm gonna stop sharing, and I believe Cory is gonna put the Jamboard up. So we'll give him a minute to do that. All right. And what you're gonna do is as you are thinking about this vision and mission statement, you're going to talk to me and your peers there about the alignment you see between the vision and mission statement and core values and beliefs that you just adopted. So let's start off, Michelle, if you would just share how you might see alignment. If you have any thoughts about misalignment, please share those. Or if something is missing in the idea of connecting vision and mission to those core beliefs and values. And as you speak, I'm gonna capture it in the Jamboard. So can you see the Jamboard on your screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, very good. So you guys should be able to see that as I'm working. Okay, Michelle, share any alignment you see.
So with the revisions that were made today, the equity section, I see that being in line with the vision as well as parts of the, of the mission statement. I'm trying to pull up the actual statement. Sorry, I relocated myself. Let me grab my sheet, because I can tell you exactly what I'm, I was listening to you and thinking inside my head.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Michelle, do you want me on the aligned slide, slide for this? Or do you want me still on the homepage of the, the Jamboard?
Uh, no, aligned slide if you would, please.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
And so the, the conversation that we had before about, and then the very tops revision about the decisions being more evidence-based.
And you see alignment there? Michelle, did I lose you?
Yes, because I think that that speaks to us understanding how we can equip our learners. And so in order for us to be able to do that, we have to know the landscape of our district. And so I would say yes.
Okay. All right, Siva. And then after Siva will be Paul. Any alignment you see that you'd like to talk about, or if there's something missing or misalignment?
So, so Michelle, I was, I was looking at some of the mission and vision statements from the surrounding districts, the document that you had shared. And I feel the, the vision statement that we have is talking about the district, but not talking so much about the student, or maybe they could, they could talk more of this. So I gotta think through this. I'm gonna pass, wait, actually.
Okay. Do you want me to put that much up on the, on the Jamboard, Siva?
Sure, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay. Yep. All right. And then Paul, and then after Paul will be Lisa.
Well, considering I, I was one of those people with Jennifer that worked on the mission and vision. So I'm gonna pass and, and let my colleagues make some comments. And I helped develop that back in the day.
All right, great. Then after Lisa, Jennifer, if you want to jump in, otherwise Howard will follow you. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, so I mean, I hope that my notes are consistent with what you're looking for. But in the vision, what I see missing is a reference to education. What I see, sorry, in the vision, maybe I said that. In the mission, I, I was in the 2009 planning group. So this architects of the future was aligned with these pillars in everything from a graphic that those were the four pillars that were referenced in an earlier version. So this theme of architect really made more sense in that context to me. I believe we kept it over time, but there's been so many iterations of it that it doesn't really make sense to me anymore the way it is, because we no longer have the pillars, the four pillars. We no longer have, so it just seems a little out of place. Things that are in the vision that don't make sense to me are lead the nation. I really have never liked that. I don't know what that means. I don't think anyone can define it. I think it's kind of ambiguous. I also don't think that it's consistent with any of our core beliefs or values. And things in the mission, again, to me, I think that it's missing. I, I think it's, it's missing the components that are in the vision. I think that they almost don't align with each other. One really references empowering a learner with certain qualities that I value, but that don't really reference education. And then the other references a challenging educational experience. So they almost seem like they don't belong together to me. Anyway, the, the architect. Anyway, the, the architect, I, I, I am a little stuck on that architects of the future because a- after, a- and I think it should evolve, 2009 was a long time ago. But I just, um, I don't see holding on to that phrase in isolation like that.
Okay. Yeah, I think I, I think I got them captured in the sticky notes on the Jamboard, and we'll go back and review them. So if I missed something at that point, feel free to jump in and clarify. But I think I've gotten most of what you said captured on the Jamboard. Uh, Jennifer, did you want to share any alignments or misalignments?
With both the statements?
Yep.
Um, well, first of all, I would sort of point out that the, the, thank you for defining the difference between mission and vision. That's tricky. I, I think the first part of the vision is a vision because it's projecting into the future, leading the nation. But I think the second part is actually more of a mission statement because we're talking about what we are doing every day. So I think there's a little incongruity there with what it's supposed to be saying. In terms of alignment with our core beliefs and values, I, I, I think leading the nation, I, I agree, it's not the most, you know, tight term. But I think that speaks to excellence. Um, I think empower, the word empowering speaks to a respect. Every learner, I think that speaks to equity. Compassion and integrity, I think that speaks to ethics. Also, respect. What I'm not seeing in there is anything that has to do with innovation, unless leading the nation is innovative. In the mission, I think the words comprehensive and challenging speak to excellence. Inspiring, I, I, I am not fond of the word inspire. I'm sorry. I think it is so bland. It could mean anything and, and nothing. So I'm sorry, I'm just not a fan. Equips, um, all learners, all learners, there's, there's your equity again. Architects of the future, yeah. I mean, I, I defer to Lisa because you have more history of the district. I, I'm, I really like, I really like this phrase because I think it's more visionary. But I, I think it's a beautiful metaphor. And I think it's something that, that people can understand. So what I'm not seeing in the mission, I'm not really seeing respect covered or innovation covered, unless inspiration is innovation. I don't know.
Okay. All right, very good. I think I've captured all of that. Um, and again, I did miss a few of the connections as you were rattling them off. But again, if we need to go back, I can add them in. But the essence of what you said is there. Howard, and then after Howard will be John.
Okay. So I'm taking the five elements of the core beliefs. So excellence, definitely the lead the nation is analogous to excellence. I, you know, one of the, the problems with lead the nation, it's not lead the nation, it's edu- educating and empowering every learner. That is not as well-defined. Now, maybe in a vision, uh, those don't need to be as well-defined, and those could be defined in the goals. But, you know, educating every learner, you know, that can be a very, very comprehensive thing in terms of, you know, what do we want a, a 12th grader to be able to exit our school with? So it, the excellence is definitely there with lead the nation. It's just that trying to define educating and empowering is maybe at a deeper level. Or, you know, a, a, another layer of this in, in another phase. Innovation, um, I sort of agreeing with, with Jennifer. I think, you know, the word inspiring can be equated to innovation. Maybe there's a better word, but I think there's a linkage there. Equity, um, where we say in the vision, every learner. And then we say all learners in the mission statement. I think we've got equity well taken care of there. Respect, uh, you've got, um, let's see, I integrity, no, no, integrity was ethics. Compassion, that was it. Respect can be sort of translated into the compassion piece. Maybe there, again, there's a, a better word or better linkage, but there is at least a tangential linkage there. And then ethics then gets into the integrity. Again, we had, you know, a full page of all of these items, and we've only got, um, you know, sentence fragments here for vision and mission. So it's tough to get, uh, you know, 10 pounds in a five-pound sack here, but I think we do have some connections. I do agree with Jennifer that the, the parenthetic phrase with compassion, integrity, and a welcoming environment really belongs in the mission statement as opposed to in the vision. And I agree with Lisa that, um, some of this terminology, um, you know, here we have architects of their future, which we've had for a decade. And then in the prior, um, vision, we had talked about a lighthouse district. And I was on a number of committees after those all got put together. And there was just lots of, you know, what does that mean? What do we really, what, what, what do we want when we say we want to be a lighthouse or an architect of the future? So I think we could take, find better words for architect possibly to try to get that empowerment that I think we're looking for. So maybe, I'm just thinking out loud here, maybe that empowering our students might be a little bit better than, than the term architect. But I really think that, that lead the nation with excellence is a very tight match and should be retained.
Okay. All right, I think I got all of your thoughts up there, Howard. John, would you go? And then after John would be Pat.
Sure. This is not my strong suit as far as crafting something down to sent, one sentence. I'm better with multiple sentences. But, uh, I'm, I'm torn about the lead the nation part. It's, I think it's been a part of the vision. And it's probably a part of everyone's vision, you know? Every district's vision, every company's vision. And I think that starts to dilute its message. But I still like it. So I'm, I'm not, I don't know. And I think it does speak to excellence when we're talking about the five categories that we had. Just trying to, I've been going back and forth, reading through the, like, details of these five things and some of the sentences and trying to figure out if we're covering. All learners really covers equity. If that's all we're going to say in order to, to cover equity. Every learner, all learner. I don't have a, a solution. I'm, I'm just wondering if that, that really covers it.
Okay.
And looking at innovation here. I don't, I don't see anything that really says innovation. But then I look back to what we are beliefs under the innovation. And like I said, I'm not sure what to put in just yet. But it, with regard to our values and beliefs, I think the growth mindset portion. I don't know that we want to regurgitate that into the vision or the mission. But something, uh, something along those lines. I don't know, I'm still kind of thinking it through, Michelle. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That's okay. This is just meant, I mean, we aren't crafting the statements yet. We're just looking for alignment. So if you guys see big glaring things missing or things you say, ooh, wow, we, we didn't deal with that well, that's the collective group process. And hopefully we'll get some of these ideas into words when we get that far. But we're not there yet, so this is good.
So along those same lines, as equity, the, the inclusion piece. I, I mean, I, I think every learner and all learners covers that. But I don't know that it covers it in the way that we, like, I think we need to be more intentional about, about that. But I'm not sure how to do it in, in such a brief statement. So I guess that's what I've got for now.
Okay. And I, the way I captured that is all learners, equity, that was sort of your connection. Is this all we should say? Does it really cover it? So it just brings to, to mind the point that you're not sure that it really captures it the way you would like it to. So that's good. If you think of anything else in the meanwhile, just shout it out. Did you have anything, John, or should I go to Pat?
Go to Pat, thank you.
Okay. All right, Pat.
Thank you. As a newer person, I'm still thinking it all through. But kind of where I'm at right now, my thoughts are similar to Trusty Southward and Trusty Ephros.
Ben, do you want me to reiterate those? Or are you good just knowing they're already up there?
Uh, I'm fine knowing they're already up there. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Given everyone's had a chance, and then you've heard others pass or say, you know, they want to think about it some more. Who would like to jump in if you're seeing a connection now that you haven't already made? And I cannot see your hands because only a few of you show up on my screen when I'm working the Jamboard. So if you would just shout out, that would be great.
So Michelle, this is Siva.
Okay, thank you.
I just thought of something, uh, and I'm connecting with something Jennifer brought up. If you're thinking of the vision statement as something looking three to 10 years out, right? And if you thought of the mission statement being something more action-oriented for now, the phrase equipping, or equipping all learners to become architects of their future may be a better fit into a vision. This is something Jennifer pointed out, and I, I tend to agree with her on that. And, and talking about empowering learners every day, that's again, seems to be more short-term. So maybe some part of that belongs in the mission statement.
Okay.
I don't know if, if anyone else skipped their first time around, but I just, I, I, I didn't say it because I don't think it was responsive to the question you posed. And maybe it is something that I bring up later. But my, the main issue I have is that neither the mission nor the vision encompass anything that says Bloomfield Hill Schools to me. They don't really capture who we are or what we're about. And to the extent that we were looking for something that, that represents who we are and who we want to be, I, I feel very disconnected to these two statements. I don't think that they capture it at all. I, I don't know if that means that we start from square one or that we still try and pull some of the things that come from our core values. I, I think we can do that and hit the things in our core values without feeling stuck to these things. They just, you know, uh, I, I know it's different for every human being who is part of this district. But for me, 20 years, I, I sent four kids pre-K through 12th grade. And if, none of these speak to me, none of the, you know, no version of these two. Architects of the future, lighthouse district, those are in the past. But those spoke to where we were and where we were going at the time. That they said something. When I thought of Bloomfield, I could relate. People to this day still repeat lighthouse district. It's just, for better or worse, it's a term they're familiar with. I don't think there's anything to really grab onto in these. It, it could be Bloomfield, it could be Birmingham, it could be any district, anywhere. Uh, I think John said it in reference to one of those. They seem just so generic that they just don't, I'm just not excited about them.
Yeah, no problem. The exercise right now is really about alignment, just to get people thinking about the fact that these should all align together. So when you either do craft a new statement or revise these or adopt them, that you at least do it intentionally, knowing the conversation that you're having right now. The other thing it does, it gives all of you a chance to really hear each other's thinking around how these connect and how they do exactly what you just said, Lisa. Speak about who Bloomfield Hills is and what you're going to do for your constituents. So I captured that on another sticky note on the Jamboard. Other thoughts from the group relative to alignment? We will get to crafting in a minute. But any other thoughts about alignment that you see? Or alignment that is missing, an item of alignment that's missing? And I'll give a few seconds.
Oh, sorry, it's Michelle.
Oh, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. The one thing that I, I, I think is missing is the, the points of social and emotional learning, the innovation piece. And I think someone mentioned that there was no innovation. I think that was our. And so I would say that with our core values, one of the things that we indicated was we're going to foster and support social, emotional wellness. And so I think that that's definitely missing.
Okay. Anybody else?
Michelle, this is Howard.
Thank you.
All right. So looking at, um, the innovation section of the, um, core beliefs that we just went through a few, about an hour ago. One of the things it talks about is cultivating an environment of student choice and student voice and flexibility. And I think that really is kind of what architects of their future was, uh, referencing. So that's one connection that I hadn't really, I mean, the, the word innovation in our goals, or sorry, in our core beliefs is not really as linked in with, with the, the three bullets under it. So, um, we, we might want to think about that titling of innovation. But, um, what I'm thinking is in order to get the linkage that Michelle Harmel is talking about, that I, we should, if we don't have a perfect linkage, like we talked about with equity and all learners and every learner, but some of these other words, um, like ethics or respect, we might want to consider having those actual words of respect or ethics actually somewhere in the vision and mission. And that way, we definitely can get the linkage between the two because the word is actually there.
Anybody else? Do my traditional professor slash teacher wait time?
I was just going to say that in the mission, uh, we deliver challenges. We, we inspire them. There's comprehension, but I think it's missing some sort of support. So I think that's what I would see, um, missing from the, the current mission statement.
And, um, this is Howard again. Very few districts, while they might, well, while many districts might want to lead the nation, very few districts have the opportunity to actually do it. And Bloomfield Hills does have that opportunity. And quite frankly, we've sort of gone down a number of pegs over the last number of years. So I think the aspirational vision of leading the nation is, or something similar to that. Because again, we had it in our prior years, we had you know, in 2000, you know, the prior ones that we talked about, become a global education leader was a prior vision. And then the Lighthouse District was a similar type of thought process. So what words we use to actually craft that, you know, obviously there's flexibility there, but trying to to be the top dog and be really up there where people benchmark us and use us as an exemplar is something we should be really aiming towards. And you think about it also, the state of Michigan has a similar type of concept. They say their strategic plan is to be a top 10 state. Now, they haven't really defined what top 10 really is. But that is the same type of leading the nation to be, you know, in the upper echelon of all of your compatriots. And for the state of Michigan, it's of the other 49 states. And for us, it's, you know, amongst the, you know, tens of thousands of school districts out there. So I think that that aspiration needs to be there. To Lisa's point, in terms of it not speaking to her, I'm not sure. We'll have to think about how we make it such that it really is something that really says what Bloomfield is, but we've, as I said, we've said before, you know, global education leader or lighthouse. I mean, lighthouse is kind of a buzzword, but it's nationally recognized. I mean, all of these terms are the same type of thing that, you know, you want to be in the papers or you want to be written up in the books, that you want to be like Bloomfield. You know, Bloomfield is the one that you, you know, people should be making a path to our door, saying, how did you do that? Because you are so great. And I even talked to Pat Watson a few months ago that if we can do what we say in our strategic plan, then Pat Watson should be superintendent of the year. So that's the kind of thing that we should be looking for is what will it take to be able to have the MASA say Pat Watson is head and shoulders above every other superintendent of the district? Because look what he did for Bloomfield Hills Schools.
All right, I'm going to give some more pause for additional think time for anybody.
To Howard's point, like I said, I agree. However, if we craft a vision that puts us in the lead of the nation or, you know, whatever we want to lead, we don't have to say it. It will be known because we will be. So I can see leaving it out if the vision encompasses it in some other way, I guess.
John, that was brilliant. I love that. That could not agree more. If you're a leader of anything, you don't need to scream it out. People know it. And you don't have to self advertise and pitch yourself on the back like that. I don't know how you just worded it, but I mean, that's the concept behind why I really don't like that phrase. I like that.
But at the same, at the same time, I agree with that statement completely, but at the same time, it also gives you a real time ruler, a real time, you know, goal to, to think, to frame what it is we're doing on a daily and yearly basis. I absolutely, I was sitting in that room and I, I, no one in that room hated the term lead the nation more than I did. I thought it was arrogant and ridiculous and completely out of place. And I grew to be, to really love it because I think it gives us a goal and a level of accountability that maybe otherwise we wouldn't really think about every day. And agreed, we don't have to, we're not, I don't think it's there to pat ourselves on the back. I think it's there to propel us towards the ultimate goal. So that's just my thinking on the phrase.
And I totally agree with Jennifer. And another way to think about it, what you have in your vision then helps you define what your goals are. I mean, as Michelle Harmel is telling us, this is an iterative process. It goes from the core beliefs and values to the vision, to the mission, to the goals, and then the strategy. And we will look back at the vision as we develop the goals and say, what goals do we need to do to meet the vision? And then we will develop strategies through the MYKIP process to meet the goals that meets the vision. So everything will point backwards and be aligned and be coherent. So this vision statement, and I, absolutely, we don't want to be arrogant. But we're not there. I mean, you know, think about the United States to be, to form a more perfect union. That's arrogance in terms of to be a perfect union. But to form a perfect, more perfect union, I mean, it's worked for 240 years. And we're always striving towards that vision of a more perfect union. So for Bloomfield Hills, it is that aspiration of leading the nation. And quite frankly, there are districts that do lead the nation.
I think to me, I think it's inherently inequitable, that phrase, because I think what one person defines as leading is not the same for someone else. And I think you're leaving people out by a singular definition of lead the nation. Somebody might lead it with, how? How do you prove you're leading it? With high test scores? Another person might lead it with good sports teams. I don't even know what it means. But I think that it leaves out the multitude of choices that we have in Bloomfield. And to me, I lifted something that just summarizes Bloomfield to me. And it's present in every single one of our mission state, mission statements and visions over the years since I've been here. And that is that we value everybody's choice, whatever it is. When Pat came to us, he said, in front of his 90 day plan was infinite possibilities. And I loved it because that to me was Bloomfield. It was anything is possible. And it's what I wanted to instill in my kids, a sense of when they graduated, that anything was possible. And I want all our students to have that. When we say lead the nation without any sense of what that means, it says to me we're picking something of importance to one person, but maybe not to another. And that to me is exclusionary.
So the leading the nation is not the issue that you're having or that we have here. As I said earlier, it's the word education or, you know, so what do we have here? I lost my, my screen. Hold on.
And remember, just to clarify, right now, we're not deciding on a phrase. We're just getting clarity of understanding on alignment. So the conversation's good as long as we don't drift over to deciding at this point, we're just.
I'm sorry, I agree, but I just want to say something to Lisa's point. I totally get what you're saying in that vein. But on the flip side, it gives the administration the flexibility to define what leading the nation means to us, however we choose to do so. I don't think, I don't think it boxes us in to any particular definition of what that means. And I think that's kind of nice.
So what we can do, or what we have here is Lisa, I mean, so Architects of Their Future gives that flexibility, gives that empowerment, that student choice, you know, so that's incorporated in the, in the mission already. The, I agree that leading the nation, and I said this earlier, in educating the learner, every learner, you know, what does, what are we defining as educating? Well, that I think comes in from the team of eight. And when we set the goals to really expand upon what educating, leading the nation and educating really is, what metric do we think is important in educating children? There are many, many of them. We can have, you know, architects, I'm sorry, torture of a learner. We can have whole child. We can have academics. We can have arts. There can be lots of things that we want to lead the nation in. So we need to focus the district, and that's the board's job with, with Pat as the team of eight, to take that word educating and break it down into exactly what we really mean. So we do have, and we do have equity because we say for every learner, all learners. Quite frankly, this, this strategic plan is the only time we actually talk about the kids. If you read the other mission statements, they never talked about all. They never talked, the word all and every has never been there before. This go around in 2018 was the first time we really incorporated equity into our strategic plan.
Can I share a couple of thoughts? Is that okay?
Sure. Yep, your turn, Pat.
So I might ramble for a minute. So I would like us to consider something other than lead the nation, not so much just because it could be seen as an elitist view. I also don't want us to create a system where we're chasing our tails consistently. For example, we want to lead the nation in SAT scores. Okay. I can look at a school like Dalton School in Manhattan and look at what they're doing to achieve their high SAT or ACT scores, or then we, we're going to implement that. We can say, all right, who's leading and looking at standardized tests, who's leading the nation in SAT scores for black students? Oh, okay. It's Palo Alto in California. So now we're going to implement, you know, this system for our black students. I kind of going back to what Trustee Ephros said and Trustee Gemrath said, I think we need to craft it a little bit differently. So it's also more inclusive. Lead the nation, not really sure how we define it and then try to quantify it. And I get the idea that we can decide what that means. But I'm looking more in a global sense as well of how do we create something that is going to be mission and vision driven? How do we create something that creates a sense of ownership? That talks about operational excellence, that talks about outstanding leadership, that is innovation focused. That is something that is for employees, students, and all stakeholders. And, you know, really, when it says lead the nation, I don't feel that is student centered in my opinion. And I think everything should be focused on the students. I'm not wed to infinite opportunities. I'm not saying that should even be part of the conversation. But I do feel that leading the nation can be tweaked or rewritten in a way that is a little more student focused and allows us to really go after our values and do what's right for our community and our students. Just because Naperville, Illinois is doing something that works for them. It's not a plug and play system where you just take someone else's ideas and you plug it in and it works for your school system. We continue, we will need to continue to look everywhere. And I think in the past 13 months, you've seen from the whole cabinet team, we do look everywhere. Remember, we were the school district that brought in South Korea, that brought in Israel, that brought in Denmark, that brought in Canada, that brought in 20 different school districts from around the country to talk about going back to school. We did that, right? We were the leaders in getting that information early on. We were one of the first districts in the state of Michigan to have our own metrics to get students back in school before the local health divisions did, right? And Trustee Matlaw, I remember you sending me the stuff from Wisconsin. If this happens, then, you know, the whole flow chart so that we can have protocols and things in place. Those are important things. So I knew it's going, I'm rambling a little bit, but those are kind of my thoughts.
I think I captured most of them, Pat. I didn't list every country you named, but I did name that you, you know, did say, look across the across the nation. I think you did the world as well. So I think I got the gist of it there. Any other thoughts around alignment? We're going to have time to craft in a minute. But I want to make sure we're thinking about alignment for all of these things. And, and again, you'll have drafts of this and feedback. So you'll have time to think about it again. So I'll pause for a few seconds here and give some wait time.
Michelle?
Yes, Howard.
I have, I have, I have a comment, Howard.
Go for it, Paul.
Just kind of looking at, I was just, I'm looking at other ones and ours. The one thing we don't say, and how we want to say it, like I've seen other ones that say how we're preparing our students. Like one I've read, I pulled up, prepared our students for a complex, changing world. And others, you know, would prepare our students to be global citizens. So I don't think in what we crafted, we, we comment about how we want to prepare our students.
Okay. That's it.
Michelle?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so excellence is definitely seen as leading the nation. Now, can we come up with other words for how we define that? Sure. But, and I'm certainly open to other ideas, but I don't want to water down the fact that we want to be near the top, whatever that means. Now, I agree with Superintendent Watson. And I had this very same thing in the auto industry where in the 1980s, the US auto companies said, boy, oh, boy, Japan is cleaning our clock. So we had a whole bunch of people going over to Japan and seeing what they were doing. And we took a lot of their ideas and transplanted them to the US and they didn't work. So we have, we need to say, we need to be achieving the same or getting the same outcomes. But how you do that is not what we, the board's responsibility is. And that's not what the board should be telling the superintendent and administration in the buildings to do in terms of how to do it. We have, we will come up with a Bloomfield way of doing things. But the results is what we need to be looking for using an educational term exemplars. That we want to find places that are doing things, that are accomplishing things. And we want to accomplish those things, but do it in a Bloomfield Hills way.
Okay. Anybody else? And again, just shout out because I lose your faces when I'm using the jam board. So five, four, oh, somebody's speaking. Go ahead.
All right, Michelle, this is Silva. Like, like few of the other folks in the eight, I still am uncomfortable with lead the nation. I also feel it's somewhat elitist and grandiose. And, and there may be better ways to achieve those outcomes without advertising that statement. And I keep coming back to points others have raised. Pat, Lisa, and others. There's so many different ways to define lead the nation. And I think we're boxing ourselves by putting that in versus talking about the strengths of our district and how we're going to leverage that into better outcomes for students. going to leverage that into better outcomes for students.
Michelle, my concern with the way this conversation seems to be going, for the last, we did our first strategic plan in 2008. We never had one before. So we've had, now, this is our second strategic plan in basically 15 years. And in 2009 or eight, it said, become a global education leader. Then we kind of, we massaged the words a little bit, and we said nationally-recognized lighthouse district. How is lead the nation any different conceptually from what we've been saying for the past 15 years? Why in the world now are we saying that it's elitist, where that's exactly what we've been saying for two decades? That we were going to be nationally, a global education leader and nationally-recognized?
I'm not going to answer, Howard. I'm going to let you guys have this dialogue, because that's the exact point of having the conversation. So I'm going to capture the question, but your peer should be jumping in.
Can I ask a, yeah, I'll ask a question. I don't understand how, when someone says, whatever, I mean, we could wordsmith it, lead the nation, or you want to be the best at something, how is that an elitist comment? Isn't that what anyone strives for? Isn't that what, like, you know, let's just say, you know, our forensic team wants to win state, you know, they want to be the best in the state, someone wants to be, you know, wants to win the World Series. So, I mean, they want to strive for excellence. I mean, I don't, I mean, it, I don't, I don't equate comment of saying we want to lead the nation as an elitist comment. I just, as maybe Jennifer pointed out earlier, we want to strive for excellence. So how we wordsmith that, we wordsmith that.
Would somebody like to address it? I think we're confusing strive for excellence and lead the nation are not synonymous, not at all. No one is suggesting that we don't want to be excellent. No one is suggesting that we don't want to succeed in all different things that we do. But it is not possible to lead the nation in every single area, respecting every single avocational and vocational and all the other things we listed, things our students are involved in.
And we're not saying that.
Okay, I'm going to wave the red, I'm going to wave the red flag or the yellow flag.
My, my bad, sorry.
Thank you, Howard. Lisa, go ahead.
Lisa, Lisa, I apologize. Lisa, I apologize. Will you accept my apology?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What, my point is, it isn't even every student's goal to lead the nation. Some students don't, don't even want the recognition. They're, they prefer be a different kind of approach. They want a more, more humility, where, you know, I appreciate the analogy to Pat being superintendent of the year. The Pat that I have gotten to know over the last year wouldn't even put that in his top 100 goals, because he doesn't get his sense of value and sense of self-worth from awards and leaders, leading the nation. He's, in my opinion, more fulfilled when he collaborates and helps other districts rather than competes with them, per se. It's not everyone's value to lead everybody else. Some people just want to help other people, and some want, I don't think we can instill a value of excellence synonymous with lead the nation. Excellence means something different to other people. You know, the things I value in my own kids, they're not, not when they get an A on a test, it's when they help somebody, when they do something altruistic for somebody else. We don't share the same definition of lead the nation, and if you don't, if you're not specific, it becomes an empty term. That is just...
Thank you, Lisa. There were others that had a review, so I'd like to have someone else share as well about to answer Paul's question.
Can I share?
Yes.
So just, just, just a thought. Let me gather. All right, so, just thinking, we can't say we want to lead the nation, and it might be, you know, like, it sacrifices some of our students. I'm not sure if I'm using the right words, but it seems like lead the nation is not all students-focused, is my thought.
Elaborate on that a little bit more, Pat.
Really?
Give an example.
Well, yeah, we want to look at our students individually, and leading the nation in, for example, an SAT score, SAT scores, and then putting in all these mechanisms that all students should be involved in, isn't really focused on, you know, what may be best for each child. I kind of think of either supposed to lead the nation more of a, what would it take to become a world-class organization? Because a world-class organization allows you to lead in all, all kinds of areas and all kinds of things, and we can define what it means to be a world-class organization. Just, just thinking and sharing my thoughts.
I think that, just following up on what Pat said, yeah, I think we want everyone, all of our students, to be whatever they define as the best that they can be, and whatever they can get out of the experience in Bloomfield Hills schools, prepare them for that. And however we word that, and whether it's a world-class organization, how we define that, that's ultimately the end goal. You're right, not everyone's going to want to do this, you know, do that, lead whatever, but, you know, as long as they're prepared for the next step, in whatever journey they want to, you know, as long as we help them prepare for the next step, that's sort of what I'm looking at.
So, so Paul, this is Siva, just following up on what you and Pat said. Instead of BHS wanting to lead the nation, do we want our students to be leaders at whatever they choose to do?
Correct, yes, exactly.
Yes. I'm sorry. I love that. Yes, we do. Also, think about this, think about the mental health of our students, our students, and think about the fact that there's so much pressure on our students right now to do well in school. I talk to students who feel like, if they don't get in Michigan, they've wasted all of their school. And then we're going to turn around and say, lead the nation? Doesn't that send a message to our students that if you're not number one, you're nothing, that you haven't achieved? I've literally had students in Bloomfield Hills tell me, if I don't get in Michigan, hopefully, if my backup plan can be Michigan State, but if I don't get in one of those two, I feel like I haven't accomplished anything at all. That's a horrible thought.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I agree. I think, Siva, that's an elegant solution to the problem, is you can write, write in encouraging our, our young people to be leaders, you know, as they define it or something to that effect.
Guys, I think you're misreading the vision. It currently says, BHS will lead the nation, the organization, BHS, will lead the nation in educating and empowering every learner. Now, so that the, it's not that every student, every learner is leading the nation, not at all. It's the organization which is then going to educate and empower every learner. Now, can we wordsmith and words, and craft it to, to more focus it on the, the needs and desires of the individual learner? Absolutely. That latter part of the sentence can be expanded upon to do exactly what, what Pat is looking for, for the individual student. But it's the organization that's going to be leading the nation, not the individual student.
Okay. I got that captured as well.
Understood. I understand it, but I think if we, if we, anyway, I think we're getting ahead of ourselves in, in Michelle's process, but...
It's okay, it's okay. Go ahead.
And also, guys, for the last decade, we have said as an organization, and this is what, also realized that this, all of this stuff came from the, a lot of this came from the community. So if we're going to be totally re-crafting the vision and mission of the organization, the strategic plan for the next decade, I mean, we've had 15 years of the community involvement of being a, you know, saying, global education leader, lighthouse district, nationally-recognized, I mean, we had this, you know, this exemplar approach to things. We can't be started taking a, you know, back, backstepping here, and saying, all of a sudden, we're going to throw all that stuff out? The last 15 years?
In the same vein, Howard, you're the same person that said that we've, we're down a couple pegs on whatever scale that you're using, and we've had these, the same vision words before, and so, what, what, how are they working? You know, I mean, how are they working?
And the re, well, and the reason why that is, John, is because we, the board, have not really crafted good goals coming from the vision and, from the vision that has been there for the last 15 years.
Right, and maybe it's because leading the nation doesn't say anything.
That's the board's fault. And this new board is really understanding how a strategic plan needs to be working through from the vision to the goals to the my KIP process.
So Howard, let him respond to, instead of going deep into reiterating the process, he's trying to go in.
I apologize.
Yeah, no, that's, go ahead, yep, thank you.
All that I want to say is that maybe lead the nation doesn't say enough, in that it's too vague and too... I'm not saying it's elitist, it just doesn't say anything, it doesn't mean anything, because it's, I mean, type in, you know, Google, lead the nation, it's probably in 50% of the district's, you know, mission statements. I just, it doesn't say enough.
And I'm not disagreeing with you on that, John. If we want to define it better, so that instead of just having it as, you know, 10 or 15 words in a, in a vision, if we want to expand the vision such that it's more definitive, I have no problem with that at all.
Okay, so that's a good point to, that's a good point to pause. Yeah, Paul, is that you?
Yeah, I just want to, just want to, we have eight minutes, you know, I'm conscious we've been on this call for three hours and 52 minutes, you know what I mean? I'm conscious of time, I don't know what, obviously, we're not going to complete what we want to complete, you know, tonight, so, you know, and obviously, we could do this in a subsequent meeting going forward, there'll be live, hopefully, going forward, so, you know, we could use an actual whiteboard, even though I'm...
It would make it a lot easier, wouldn't it?
Well, I just want to say one thing before we go on. Man, just say, I may be the only parent that was here 15 years ago, and if that's true, the people I know that worked on all these things would be proud if we could evolve and grow with the way the world has. The world looked a lot different 15 years ago. It was a lot less equitable, and we didn't know what we know now. We're trying to be better, so we should be evolving and growing. We should be. We shouldn't hold on to things that are outdated and inequitable.
So what you guys are talking about is different spotting, and each of you has a different view, and I think I've captured all of them. And I think, Paul, to your point about timing, there's a lot to work out in this conversation. So one of two choices, the next step would be going through these sticky notes and finding sort of the commonalities you all have shared. Given you've been on the call now for four hours, I really believe that would be best done if I work on that and bring it forth at the next meeting, truly, because the next step is taking this thinking we've just had, and either A, you rewriting the mission and vision statements, or revising the ones you have. Now, you had a really good process that you used with the core values, and a lot of conversation and thinking was shared just now, which is excellent, and it needs to be a part of how things get crafted. So if you don't want to go into the next meeting empty-handed, in the meantime, there could be some of that crafting like you did with the value statements to get some drafts in front of you before the next meeting. So what would be the preference of the group, or Paul, however you facilitate as a president?
No, I mean, I think, and, you know, obviously, I'm open to ideas, I think what you just said, I think we have, you have, you know, how many, 50 sticky notes? I think if you could take, if you could take back, you've heard a lot, you have, you took great notes, and then collaborate and come back, you know, with some common themes, and, you know, we could take it to the next step. Listen, we just passed the core values, that was great, you know, that was great, you know, we knew we weren't going to pass this tonight, the next meeting, or maybe even the meeting after. But I think we have a great start, and if you could do that, I think that would be great.
Yep, and I really appreciate everybody's sharing, and you did a nice job, because you want, we want to hear your passions, and we want to hear what's right, and this also gets you an opportunity to know each other. But I agree, real sticky notes in a real meeting would make it a lot easier. So if anyone have last-minute thought before I close the jam board?
I would just like to suggest that we take what we learned through Michelle's guidance tonight about what a, what a vision statement's supposed to say exactly, what a mission statement's supposed to say exactly, the five or six, you know, leading words of our value statements, or any words that are meaningful to you, to us, as we read it, and actually come up, each of us come up with a draft of a mission and a vision to toss around at the next meeting.
I agree with Jennifer, and I don't know that we need seven of them or eight of them. I mean, I'm hearing basically two thought processes. One is that, that leading the nation and some of that, the way we've had some of the visionary statements over the last decade is fine, and obviously, we can wordsmith and wordcraft, you know, some of that. And there are others that are feeling, no, that's not at all what they want, they want a different view. I'd love to see what that different view is.
That's great, that's what, exactly what should happen, is people bring their ideas together, so we'll get to that.
Yeah, so, but instead of having seven people or eight people do it all independently, maybe we can get, you know, two groups or three groups together and kind of brainstorm, because that's when, when the vision, I'm sorry, the core beliefs were put together, it was basically three people, it was myself, Cynthia, and Jennifer, who crafted 90% of what we approved tonight.
So I'm open, I'm open to whatever your, the board as a whole would want facilitation to be. I would recommend the thought about one thing, and that is, you're learning a lot about each other's deep thinking around what the work should be for the district. The only problem with separating into a small group is not every voice is heard as you're getting to these deep understandings about what's important, which will end up in a vision or mission statement. It might take a few steps, but that's my only caution about doing it in a small group. Organizing information and drafting your own to bring to the table, given the information, I don't think will hurt the next facilitation, in fact, it will help. So if everybody did that, it would speed it along, and I think joining more conversation at that point would be helpful. So just my thoughts in terms of facilitation.
I echo that too, Michelle and Jennifer. I like the idea of each of us working on it and bringing, as a group, to the next meeting what we have.
Could I add my comment? So Howard, you had made a reference to, you know, this being, or the, you know, this key part of leading the nation being input from the community many years ago. How do we reconfirm that's still essential to the community today? And so, values change over time, right? And what was relevant 15, 20 years ago may not be relevant today. So we may be holding on to some thoughts from some survey in the past when that may no longer be the case. How are we going to validate that that still holds for the community? Just something to think about.
Well, we, this was not few, this is not 15, 20 years ago, this was in 2018, when we had the 50 people together, so this is just a couple of years old.
So maybe that was a question for pondering, even though you did give a bit of an answer?
Yeah, so Howard, it would be great to get some feedback on how that was put together, because I was not part of the team back then. because I was not part of the team back then.
And you don't have to share it today, Howard, but we'll share it at the next meeting, because I think I hear Paul saying it's time to wrap this one up. Other last minute thoughts on this before I, or close the jam board?
I just, I just want to make sure that I'm following our homework assignment. Uh, are we making reference to, um, the meeting that we have as a board? Or is this going to be a special meeting? I just want to make sure I, I'm able to participate.
Sure, so I will tell you, I will not be at your next board meeting, which I think is, uh, April 13th, if I'm not mistaken. So this will have to happen at a time that will work in my calendar as well. So that, you guys will have to let me know, and we'll have to coordinate what date that would be. But the homework can be happening, it's just not going to be for that particular meeting if I'm supporting the facilitation.
Thank you. I just have to schedule into my, my time, that's all.
Sure, no, I understand. Yep. Um, so let, also, the jam board is still at the same link. Um, I would encourage you not to add to it, but I've sort of grouped them by color, and the color means nothing other than, um, trying to get an equal number of each color, because the next step in the process would have been to look at them in groups and find out what's similar and different, so we can get rid of some. So I'll take care of that piece, um, but I'll keep this jam board just the way it is so that everybody can see it as you're doing your draft homework, and you'll still get to it with the same link that you had been given to do your practice in, uh, earlier. All right. Uh, Paul, I'm going to give it back to you then. If this is our stopping point, the next time we get together, we would be on drafting our vision and drafting our mission, which are really the last two points of this particular facilitation. This was great conversation, and I'm real glad I didn't have to throw my flag. I actually threw it at myself one time.
Great, no problem.
We're, we're trainable.
Of course you are.
Somewhat. Well, thank you very much, Michelle. Thanks for doing this. This is very important work. Thanks to everyone who participated. I know it's a long meeting, but we've got accomplished a lot in this meeting. With that, I will call for adjournment. And if I don't speak to everyone, everyone have a happy spring break, or whatever that's worth. Take care, everyone.